Welcome. We're gonna start with agenda item number one, the dispense reading. Oh, roll, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Sir Bernard.
Here.
Sir Bernie, that's.
Here. Apologize for being late, we had a late meeting at the planning commission this morning. Got to welcome all here. Agenda item one, the dispense reading in the minutes of the workshop session dated January seven, two oh two five. In a regular meeting, dated January two oh two five. Accept and approve video recordings of both meetings.
As great with those, we just do dispense three minutes, special meeting.
Okay, you want me to condense it?
Yeah.
Okay. You can skip. Dispers reading in the minutes, special meeting, and to approve the bills. Four, I need to help with the former president.
From there, yeah.
To approve, thank you, and I appreciate it, Commissioner. To approve the extension of time to purchase a dog license. Tags for one additional month till the end of business day of Friday, February twenty eight, two oh two five. Actually permitted by ORC C nine five five point oh one, Martha.
Martha, you're Chuma County Auditor, I have this one and the next two that I submitted. This is just what we do every year. Statutorily, the dog license, we know is December first of the previous year to the January thirty first of the current year. The commissioners have the ability to extend it, we generally extend it because that helps with. Number five.
Martha, how are we so far? We up?
I can't, I don't sell that for you, but I do know what you guys grew from with the commissioner. Her in history from last week was thirty one hundred. It's what we had this summer, and those are the ones that are sold by us here at the Auditor's Office. What comes in later, after the, you kind of the, the, the time period. Kind of trickles in a little bit is from our vendors, we don't do the vendors monthly, we do the vendors. And when I say vendors, people like the hardware stores, the other outlets that sell the. Yeah.
How many, how many vendors do we have?
Ah, if I go ahead, can I? Sorry, it is, we do have the list, so it's on our website, so if you want to look it up. So number five is also mine, to amend the commissioner's regular meeting agendas, dated September twenty seven, twenty twenty three. Basically, this one and the following one are about the TIG. This one just changes, and we, I addressed this last week in the workshop with you. We changed it from President of the Trumbull County Commissioners to Attorney Commissioner Daniel. So that it will be, Danny will be the TIG representative, or our official one will be the TIG representative on the transportation.
Is that all right with you, John? You're staying more time, you okay with that?
And also, also we moved and go on that because we, we. The statute doesn't really allow for representatives to be chosen, doesn't authorize that. So there was a new one there that each board member could choose a designated representative of their choice. As I said, that it's the statute authorizing the transportation improvement district does not authorize you guys to do that. So I, I'm appointed, I have to. Just like anybody else. The next one goes along with that because originally. When he's former county engineer Smith was appointed to leave, this is to remove him. And then to replace the current county engineer David Cristofaro. It makes a lot of sense either of what it does that.
Thank you, Mark. Seven, acknowledge the proposal for aggregate materials for the year oh five, twenty five and twenty six. And authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to advertise for sealed bids. For the purchase aggregate materials for the use of the Trumbull County Engineer. In order to specify, she submitted Trumbull County Engineer contract period eleven, two oh two five through February twenty tenth, twenty twenty six. Eight, to remove all previously tabled agenda items which have not been previously reopened. And otherwise voted on, and to reject those agenda items as a matter of course.
The commissioner, that's just in case we had anything pending over the last year that we overlooked, we tabled something we didn't take it from table. Just wipes the slate clean, so we're not carrying over any baggage from the past that we didn't act on.
If you have a lot of. I appreciate that coming, that coming on. Nine, to concur with the county engineer David D. Cristofaro. Grant right away permits requested by companies listed. Necessary permit fee has been submitted. Approval subject conditions listed on the permit, J S Bova, excavating LLC, Enbridge Gas. Five. Ten, concur with the Trumbull County Engineer, grant the special hauling permits to haul steel foils. Trumbull County roadways by the companies listed. Same necessary permit fee has been submitted and approval subject conditions, GRO, transportation. Eleven, authorize Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to pay Neo Ride. An Ohio consulate government membership dues in the amount of one thousand dollars, calendar year twenty twenty five. Mike, what is it?
I think so. Actually, I've got eleven of them. So it's much sound with Trumbull County Transit. Neo Ride is a group that started back in twenty fourteen. They're out of Wasworth, Ohio, out of the Dine County. What they basically do is there's like thirty five transit systems throughout the country. That are part of this group, and they do procurements for different things. So like for purchasing buses and things of this nature. The one thing that I'm really interested in with this group is called something called Easy Connect. Easy Connect is a one stop shop for this area. So people will make one phone call, one eight hundred number, and it's part of WRTA. It's WRTA. Columbiana County, I thought it was supposed to be Star also. And the calls will be a one eight hundred number, they'll either go into WRT or Star. And then from that point, they get either scheduled, since we don't do the actual scheduling, vendors that do it. WRTA, they'll actually schedule. Their rise through this. Or start, or Columbiana County. With us, it's going to be a little different in the sense that we have multiple vendors. So what this one eight hundred number will do, it will send the person to that vendor instead of that. That person having to have four or five phone numbers for different vendors, they'll just have to have one. And that call will go to that one number. And then the people will set the rise up to other vendors. So this is the one thousand dollar membership fee that I've become, I, I'm part of. And I, when I was in Medina, I was part of it also, so.
Is that to and from, like, you know, pick them up and then deliver and then?
Yeah, usually when, I always tell people, when you set your rise up to go there, set your rise up to go back also. You gotta, you do, you need to do both.
And they have the same selected driver.
No.
Oh.
Could be a different driver.
Okay.
It's the same company, but a different drive, so you're, yeah.
Commissioners, any questions? So that goes through all the transportation, like USA Taxi and all Comfort Care and all that? Do they, do they be part of this?
They're gonna be part of this also.
So those, would they call one of their companies?
Well, see, right, present the way that it's done right now. A client will call me and says, you know, I need a rider. Put my call, and I'll give them two or three numbers, I'll give them USA, our own comfort care, and Country Neighbor. Well, Country Neighbor, we know is strictly, you know. So I give them these those three, and then they make the decision who they decide to call. This here, I'm gonna give them a one eight hundred number to call. And then they'll call that number and say, um, they'll talk to the person, I'm gonna have to train these people. But they'll talk to the people, and they'll find out, oh, this is a wheelchair client, they need to go with this. This is a northern deer, they need to go with this one.
So it just eliminates you from making the phone calls.
Well, I mean, talking to the people. It just eliminates a couple of calls coming to me, I mean, I'll still be getting some of these calls, it's just gonna eliminate some.
And Comfort Care, and then they're all right, all.
Yeah, we've already talked, the company that we're working with. Has already talked to Comfort Care or Vanguard or USA, yeah, they're all outworked. So it, so it's gonna be a little different, because like I said, the way it's supposed to work is a call would go to. A call center, it's like, for example, down in Cincinnati, they're doing a Cincinnati Butler. Call goes into Cincinnati, and then they're the ones that actually do the scheduling for Butler. But because we can't do the scheduling. So that's, so what's gonna happen with like Columbiana County, since they have their schedule, they'll actually do the scheduling for them. To relieve their schedule.
So how will the person know what number to call?
That person are not going to, I have a brochure that I have out, it's a flyer. And once we get all this set up, I might have to change my brochure, and whichever vendors, change the brochure with the phone number sign. And then that way they'll call, so normally, they call me one time, I give them the number and that's it, so.
So this, this organization gonna do it for free, they're not gonna bill us for doing that?
Hasn't right now, for the first couple of years, it's definitely gonna be for free, it's not for free, it's grand money. They have gone out and really hustled, and gotten a lot of grand money to cover this project for several years.
But it's free to us, to our county.
Right now, it's free to us for the next several years, yes. After that, I don't know if it's gonna work or not, but right now, I do have a meeting, and I'm going to on Friday to go over this. The last time I heard it was three to five years ago.
And if there's any hiccups in the program, will you be made aware of it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we need to monitor that a little bit, because I, I don't wanna pawn our people off in another county, and they get horrible service. We have someone we're paying here to give them correct service.
Right, but the, the idea is, see, because right now, they call me, they get the numbers, and then they call the numbers. So they'll call me still, they'll get the numbers, they'll get, I'll give them a one eight hundred number to call. And then that one eight hundred number will put them to whatever transportation.
Hopefully.
Provider. Yeah, that's the idea, I mean, this is gonna take some training with the WRTA staff and things, and I know this, but. But we're hoping to get this launch.
Hope it doesn't work.
We can pull out of it, sure. Yeah.
It's okay. If you were to initiate it, Mike, and it didn't work out, I mean, is there any kind of? I mean, I know it's just a thousand dollars, is there a refund?
For the membership? No, I mean, no, the membership's a membership.
So basically, once you're in, you get, you come here, it doesn't work, then you go back to the old.
Well, you still be a member of this group and learn other things. This isn't just a dues for this.
Right.
Sounds like there's other things involved with it.
That they can, that they do. I mean, there's another, there's another part of this that I'm not part of right now, just because I'm not comfortable with it yet. But there's another group that they're with that does customer service, complaints and things of this nature. I only have ten complaints a year. I don't feel like paying extra money out for ten complaints a year. They do, some other, some other stuff that they do, so, once they get it up and running. I wanna, I wanna see how it works with WRTA before we go in. And again, that one would be free for the first year, because we got money for that. But after that, we'd have to pay, so again, it's not something, it's something I wanna look at, but. So there, there's other things that this group does that we could be part of.
They don't have a group over here with like Portage Mahoney and Ashrila, something closer. This group, you said it's Medina and Columbiana.
Oh, no, no. Are you all right?
Yeah.
The group actually started with Akron. A couple others, there's like three others. It's run with thirty five transit systems. Some of them are like porters all around this area. Some Cincinnati's part of it, Cleveland's part of it, but they actually have Kentucky as part of it. Indiana, Michigan, you, not you.
What I'm saying is Mahoney and Ashrila don't. Don't have this, they're not part of this.
Oh, no, WRTA's part of it. Okay, no, they're, they were, they just, Dean Harris, when he was at Akron, was one of the first people on this. So what happens is a lot of these people leave their systems, go someplace else and bring in the next system. So that's kind of what I did, I was in Medina, I brought it in and then, but this is. Yeah, there's thirty five systems across the country, so, and algae.
Yeah, is this, I wanna make sure that the commissioners are abreast, is this for senior levy and disabled? Because there's two different types of transit.
No.
What is this for? So this is just for the, what is this for?
It's for transportation in general.
Okay.
Oh, it's for everything. In other words, this group is for transportation in general, so we did senior, disabled, and general public for everything.
Oh, for, for all of that, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's in the program that runs through job banking services.
Well, that's net N E Ts, that's a little bit different, that's why I wanted to make sure, yeah.
Yeah, does it doesn't have to run through that?
No, that's gonna be my next question, I was hoping that was, I just wanna make sure that they're understanding. Because there's so many different types of transit within our, within your wheelhouse. So I think it's really important to understand, and for the, for the client customers who are taking all these rides, understand, you know, whether you're. Going through senior levy or disabled transit, just, but we have to make sure that N E T is kept separate, so that way they're not confused. Sorry, just.
No, no. Well, I can throw some, I can throw a monkey wrench into that one, though.
Uh, maybe not.
No, I mean, at some point, you could actually contract with. We would be doing the rides, and so I'm doing, that is a, that is a huge possibility.
John, you know, you would have the chance, you would have the bid.
No, I know that. You would have to bid just like everybody else, and I've done that in other places, I was in Claremont County. And when I was in Medina, we had a Department of Job Banking Services contract. And that's a huge contract, and yeah, it's absolutely right, you've bet on the contract. Do that, so it is a possibility, the only way to grow the system would be to, that transit, so transit's under one rope, not under one. Now, the, the part of this, Neo Ride, that would be.
We were talking about that.
No, no, I didn't, I, that's my second.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's something down the road.
The pros and cons.
That's something just down the road, gonna talk.
Any other questions for Mike?
He's got number twelve, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Twelve is to authorize, it's like some kind of commissioners. Or we saw, uh, they had to sign the twenty twenty six Ohio Department of Transportation Office. Authorization resolution, the Ohio Department of Transportation, some assistance, return grant. Okay, so what this is, I had to complete a grant application for fifty three ten funding prior to the end of the year. At the time, Commissioner Malloy was president, now you're president. So basically, we have to do an amendment, uh, resolution, and Lisa's the one that actually signs. This is what, I mean, I just sent you the email, I don't see it, but I. So just that's what I know. So in regards to this grant that's out there, they were due December thirty first. They're gonna be reviewed between January and March. April, they will be awarded. And then between April, May, and then in June, they will be, contracts will be coming out, so you'll be seeing something probably between May and June. Sign these. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, move on to thirteen. To accept maintenance bond number Q nine two seven oh seven oh three four four, issued by Area Insurance Company. For free home sewage treatment systems. Replacements funded through PY two oh two four H S T S Reserve Program. And installed by S and P Septic and Excavating. S and P requested final payment for the work expected and approved by Trumbull County. Combined health district maintenance bond is in the amount of twenty percent. Nine thousand six hundred twenty dollars. The final project cost of forty eight thousand one hundred dollars. And is valid for two years commencing December fifth oh four, ending December fifth oh six. Fourteen, to accept maintenance bond number Q nine three five six seven zero two five nine issued by Area Insurance. For home sewage treatment system, place it's funded through. For home sewage treatment system, place it's funded through. Prior year two oh two three, prior year two oh two four H S T S Reserve Program and installed by Two M Services. Two M Services requested final payment for the work inspected and approved by Trumbull County Combined Health District. Maintenance bond is in the amount of twenty percent, twelve thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars. Final project cost sixty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars. Valid for a period of two years commencing December eleven oh four, ending December eleven oh six. Fifteen to accept maintenance bond number nine zero zero one three zero three issued by F C C I Insurance. For the Haul Scope Center Parking Lot Resurfacing Project Funded Through. Prior Year Two and Two Three Community Development Grant Program, installed by Miller Young, Youngs Paving, Inc. Uh, requesting final payment for completed work. Approved by G P D Group Maintenance Bond in the amount of twenty percent, eleven thousand nine twenty-two seventy-two. Final project cost is fifty-nine thousand six one three sixty and valid for a period of two years. Commencing December nine oh four, ending December nine oh six. Sixteen to award a contract for the base bid, an alternate. M one to De Salvo Construction Company, the Howland Scope Center Improvement Project. Benefiting the senior population in the amount of two hundred nineteen thousand one hundred dollars and to authorize Board of Trumbull County. Commissioners to enter into contract agreement with the Salvo Construction Company in order to meet rules and regulations. Of the C D B G Program and local requirements. Commissioners passed a resolution. For sealed bids on October thirty oh four.
Chairman, I have one question.
Yes.
Has your prosecutor's office reviewed all of these?
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning Commission. Before we put anything out to bid, we send it to the prosecutor's office for review and approval. Of the contract asked. And then once it's awarded, then we make sure we have the required. Documents such as a liability insurance certificate, weapons home certificate, those things. And before the prosecutor's office will sign the. Legal certificate, he verifies that those are.
Thank you. And moving on to seventeen, authorized Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, to issue notice to proceed. Notice of commencement to Utility Contracting, Inc. Uh, the Zeta Mecca Wastewater Treatment Plant Nutrient Reduction Improvements Project Number eight S twenty. A combined sanitary sewer district notice to proceed, notice of commencement, it'll be recorded and journal. Record purposes, project start date, January two seven twenty-five. With the substantial completion date of October twenty-four oh five, representing a two day, two hundred seventy day construction period. Gary.
All right, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, commissioners, we awarded these contracts back in August. And, uh, Christie has finalized, uh, the contracts himself, got all the required signatures, all the sign offs. And it's now time to go ahead and. So, uh, these are notices. See, you can see the start and end dates. Uh, and according to the contract, two hundred seventy day construction period. And we will have a construction meeting concerning this, uh, next. Next, no, it's just Thursday, two days from now, uh, out of my office. So this is just standard, uh, language to go ahead and get a project started. And if you want me to, I'll move down to number eighteen, uh, the Yankee Lake San, sanitary sewer project. Um, we're wrapping up out there and residents along Yankee, Yankee, uh, Run Road themselves. That portion of their project's complete. We wanna go ahead and start allowing them to get connected. So that's why this is a partial substantial completion. Uh, we wanna go ahead and connect these in and some of these. Households are part of the countywide, uh, service lateral assistance program. Giving them financial assistance to make the connections. The remainder of the project up in the village is all tributary to the pump station. Main lines are all in place up in the college of Yankee Lake. But they're still, uh, we're still working on finalizing that pump station. So there'll be another substantial completion. Oh, Yankee Lake and the company pumps. Uh, number nineteen, this is our, uh. Public hearing for the Smith Stewart Road Project, and that's gonna be next Thursday. And this here is just a necessary permit, uh, with Matthew's School District in order to. Cover them under our arrangement so that we can have the public hearing in their high school. Twenty, we put out an annual request for qualifications from design firms. For twenty twenty-five water sanitary sewer projects, uh, we got responses back from these six. And so they are pre-qualified. If we go out for a request for qualification during twenty twenty-five, they only need to submit a letter of interest. And we already have their qualification statements on file. This is not for. For other engineering firms from wanting to, uh, provide, uh, design services on the projects. It's just that they're gonna have to. Submit a complete, uh, qualification statement for each project individual.
There. Uh, John, move to twenty-one.
John Gargano, J F S. Uh, this is, uh, to approve the purchase of a service contract between J F S. And Guardian Protected Services, G A S, for Title twenty protective services for vaults that are eligible. And this is. Uh, J F S would do the risk, uh, including assessments. And we would ask that, uh, the services agreement be approved in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars. With, uh, G A S and commissioners, for the newer ones. Uh, G A S works closely with our Adult Protective Services Department, A P S. They go out and they'll, they get a call on the individual elder. Um, abuse, neglect, or exploitation. They go out, our investigators go out. And if there is an issue and there's a need for guardianship and you're, they have no one else, uh, these elderly individuals. We have a contractor, G A S, who will then go and proceed if the assessment, do whatever's necessary and maybe eventually file for guardianship. And we, uh, G A S, this goes out to bid, G A S, uh, there used to be a couple others, but G A S. Bid on this and they've been doing it for us for quite a few years and have been doing this job.
Twenty-two, authorized. The Canada's President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, execute sub grant two oh two four. R O E T F R five seven four, the Tag Law Enforcement Task Force. Brand is effective for the period of May one oh four through April thirty of five. Total funding for recover Ohio Law Enforcement Grant through Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. The Office of Criminal Justice fund one hundred percent of the fifty thousand dollars. Is this through Sheriff? Sheriff, Sheriff Department.
Yeah, so this is Nick O'Hara, he runs, he's with our tag unit, uh, John O'Hara, he's in a meeting, but he has all the information on that.
Detective Sergeant O'Hara, the Sheriff's Office, signed a tag drug passport. Um, this is a one hundred percent funded through the O C G S. It covers confidential funds, um, equipment. Places in time for officer investigators that are assigned large drug passports, um, recovery bill boards, et cetera. So we have not received this, uh, grant, um. It's been almost two years since we've received this grant to my knowledge. So this fifty thousand, there's no cash match to that whatsoever. It's a, it's an upfront grant, which is not a reimbursement grant. Um, it'll be very helpful, uh, continuing with our day-to-day operations that, you know, having this fifty thousand. Um, you went to us.
No brainer.
Yeah. Now, O C G S is a little behind us. You noticed the dates. Uh, we were just reporting this on November twenty-ninth, so. Due to holidays and the transition that we're, uh, that's currently taking place, so. We actually had to have this in one day, so that's why we rushed to get on the agenda, um, to sign. So I spoke with O C G S, they're completely okay with everything and, uh, giving us some time and.
Thank you.
Good break.
Julie Green, I am the sand dot gov point of contact for the U E I. I don't know if the sheriff's office still utilizes our U E I or not. But give me a call.
I will.
Um, to go over what you need access to. Cause I just got an email the other day about D I, D I A M D. Expiring soon. I know Christine Ross, before she left. Had secured a particular U E I, but I don't know if you have grants under the old one that you still need to access to.
We do, and with right now, there's a temporary one. I'll, I can give a two and square that away. We're, we're using the temp one as a like that.
Perfect. All right, great. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Julie.
Sure.
Okay, so we got a bunch of executive sessions. First, to enter executive session one two one, two two G three. Conference with the attorney concerning disputes involving public body pending imminent court action. We will reconvene. And then we will go into another executive session. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so then, uh, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners will sign comprehensive settlement agreement. And release all claims regarding case number two oh two three C V oh 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 two nine. Commissioner Malloy, do we know what that is?
This is just, we'll talk about executive session and that's, if we decide on that, then that's the action we take.
Yeah, right. We can't talk about it right now. That's why we have executive sessions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, right.
Twenty-six, enter executive session under one two one two two G one O R C. Consider the employment compensation of a public employee reconvene. Under one two, one two two G one, to consider employment compensation of a public employee. Twenty-eight. Enter executive session under one two one two two G one. Again, to consider appointment, employment, promotion, compensation of the public employees. Reconvene under one two one two two G one, consider appointment, promotion, compensation of public employees. Thirty, to enter executive session under one two two G one, consider employment of public employee, reconvene. With the same, I mean, O R C, consider employment of a public employee.
You don't need to read thirty-two. Yeah, Alex, these are three separate, three separate.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, so commissioners, just Alex and Jensen Bush, just to remind, we will talk in executive session for that reason, but I can just give you. Uh, the first one is obviously a, um. Settlement agreement, uh, with, with Corset in a case that we've been. Uh, so that will be provided to you tomorrow, all the information, um, packets are already ready. It's pretty straightforward. Also, uh, our prosecutor's office has been working lockstep and key with me. Um, this is one that I actually went and had to sit in front of the magistrate. So I was there for that, so I can bring it up to speed with that tomorrow. Um, the next executive session is to discuss an employee, um, and something that the board needs to, to make some collective decisions on. We'll talk about that tomorrow. The third executive, the, the third executive session, excuse me, is to discuss multiple employees. Uh, under one single department under the Board of Commissioners and how we would like to, you know, go forward with that. Um, and the fourth executive session is to discuss one specific employee, uh, pertaining a, um. Bureau Workers Comp case. And that's why it needs to be discussed in our executive session, because it contains medically sensitive information.
Thank you. Out of curiosity, have we ever went into this, any executive session in the past?
Well, um, to be honest with you, you're a new board, so I feel like there's a lot that we need to get alignment on going forward. Yes, I, we have quite a few executive sessions in the past. But I don't know without speaking to you in the proper manner, all three of you in a public setting, which would be, of course, be an executive session. The direction that you would like to go forward with this county. So I feel this is the best way. Uh, also, we do try to keep H R matters as much as we can, especially when it's dealing with anything, uh, personnel. We do try our best to keep that behind. And an executive session come out and then a vote on that and not have those discussions, uh, because they are sensitive to people and I think that we owe them that, so.
Okay.
Yes.
There may be one other executive session we may have to throw on. If we do. I'll let Lisa know if it's not tonight, then tomorrow, they may have to do it from the floor. But it's in regards to attorney regarding pending legal matter that the Board of Commissioners has, that the attorney wants to brief the new commissioners on. The status of, but I don't know if he's gonna be available tomorrow or not. He wanted to be, he's trying to clear his schedule for that.
I will have, I can help be somebody who have language for that. It would really essentially be the language that you have, as long as it's, you know, a pending, uh, imminent court action, then it would be the same G three. Um, but we can work through that. Um, and then commissioners, one more thing about executive sessions. Unfortunately, you, you really can't go in. You're supposed to only go in, right, and discuss the one thing that's, that's listed. That's why we have to go in, come out, go in, come out. Um, so we do that for a reason, to protect ourselves, uh, from any liability as far as executive sessions. Mr. Danzo, anything that you wanna correct me on, please go for it and do so.
No, I'm aware of that. Funny, no, that's okay. Funny.
It'd be nice if we could just do it all in one fell swoop, but unfortunately, that's not what the law says. So we follow the rules.
Yes.
Trumbull County.
Thank you, Alex.
You're very welcome. We will. In, out, in, out, yeah. You're gonna get really tired of my face, so sorry.
So thirty-three. Yes. To notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control, the public hearing is now requested on liquor permit. Applications listed, these are, these are all Dollar Generals except for Giant Eagle down here. One on Elm Road, one on Market Street in Howland. Actually, the other in Howland, Howland two in Howland, one in Farmington. One in Warren Township and the other in Delma and Liberty. Good for the.
Commissioners, hopefully I hear back on all of these. I'm still waiting to hear back on a couple of them, but they are time sensitive, so that's why I have them. I may have to bump them to next week, but.
With these here with the liquor permit skies, they, they seem like they're just kinda simple every week.
They're only selling, they're not distributing.
And basically, they, all we do is, uh. The local law enforcement looks on the, then they put on liquor permit request in.
Right.
And then it may or may not have a public hearing on whether to allow it or not. Some of it may have to end up in a vote, depending on how the township is. And the local police department or sheriff's department notifies us that this is good to go. Then all we do is sign off on it, so we don't have to do a hearing. So it's pretty much when you see those, we just.
They're routine.
Yeah, they're, they're somewhat routine when it comes to that. We're just stating that we don't have to have a public hearing. There's no. No, um, protest from a neighbor or anyone like that, or does violate any of their zoning laws or what.
Thank you. Um, so we have Jennifer Jones here today. She's the Director of the Geogga Trumbull Waste District. And, uh, did you wanna give us a few words?
A few words. I don't wanna take up all your time. I know no one else here cares about this stuff, but, um, here's, I put together a little. You know, what we are. Most people, uh, don't even know we exist. Um, so I wanted to kind of explain what we do really quick. And how we're formed and what your responsibilities are as part of the Board of Commissioners. So we're a multi-county government agency. We were formed by the EPA. We are not part of Trumbull County. We're our own entity, sort of like a part district. Fire district, you might be more familiar with that. We have our own board, uh, we have our own money. We don't use any of your monies, which I'll get to in a minute. Um, we're very small. There's only four of us. We do everything for two counties. We're both Geogga and Trumbull County. We handle all the recycling. And our purpose is to encourage and support recycling, uh, programs in both counties, which is what we spend all of our money on, um. The, our board structure, we have two different boards. We have the Board of Directors, which all three of you serve on. We meet usually five, six times a year. We haven't set a meeting yet. We're hoping to have one on February eleventh, if that works with your guys' schedules. After the workshop, we would meet at our, my offices and on Enterprise Drive in Warren, which I could send to you, uh, Commissioner Malloy is familiar, but you guys are not so much. Um, we're, we're five, ten minutes down the street on, off of four twenty-two on Enterprise Drive. We have our own building and our own conference room there. Uh, so February eleventh at two o'clock, we'll get you guys and the three commissioners from Geogga County are also on my Board of Directors. So we get all of you guys together and, uh, your job is to approve all of our expenditures, our budgets, sort of like what we do here. Have, we'll have an agenda. Well, you'll do all your voting and discussing and things like that. Also, uh, we have, as, as required by Ohio revised code. We have a policy committee, which is an advisory committee for the Board of Directors. Uh, the policy committee has fifteen members. Of which one of them is the president of the county. So each president of the county, which would be you, Commissioner Hernandez. You would serve on the policy committee, or you can appoint a designate. So you don't necessarily have to come. You could come. or you can appoint a designee. So you don't necessarily have to come. You could come, friend.
I said it first.
I second that.
So you just need to, you know, have your clerk send me a letter, whoever your designee is, so that they can vote in your stead. So any email even is sufficient. Something in writing that says they are going to be your designee, and either you or the designee can come to the meetings. The commit policy committee meets every other month right now, because we're in the middle of rewriting our five-year plan, which is a little bit later in here. This is our five-year plan. It's a three-hundred-page document, which I will not go into today for your enjoyment. It takes us two years to write it, eighteen to twenty-four months. We started in 2023. We're nearing the tail end of it now. The policy committee is responsible for rewriting the plan. So that's why we're meeting so often. Generally, we would meet quarterly, but right now, we're meeting every other month to wrap this stuff up. So that, that next meeting is February fifth. We meet on all the even months, the first Wednesday of the month, on the even month. So February fifth at one o'clock, which I, if you're going to be the person, I'll be happy to send you all the info. Just so you're aware, we do not use any county money. We, no, no, you don't give us anything. We are solely funded on our own weird kind of strange funding mechanism. All of our money comes directly from landfills and transfer stations. So for every ton of trash people in Trumbull and Geogga County throw away, we get five dollars and fifty cents. The landfill pays us. They send us a monthly, a monthly check for all of that money. We collect about 1.9 million dollars every year. And we spend about 2.1 million, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Right now, we have, we had some extra money in the bank, or we're slowly whittling it down. We spend it on, we have ten allowable uses that we're allowed to use it on, which are recycling programs and various other expenses. But we're slowly reducing our backlog of money down, and we also apply for grants and federal grants and whatnot. So just as basic, what we spend our money on. We have all the drop-off sites. You have a drop-off site out here in Department One. We have drop-off sites in Hubbard Township and, and Hubbard City, and we have forty-three throughout the district. Thirty-one of them are in Trumbull, twenty, twelve of them are in Geogga County. We also have a new program where we do schools. So fourteen schools in Trumbull County also have bins for us now as well. They're not open to the public, but the schools can use them. And schools produce a ton of paper, so it's a great program. We've, we've just started that this school year. We spend about $875,000 a year just on our drop-off sites. You have to pay to recycle. Recycling is not free. We do not make money. That's a very common myth, that, oh, we put all that stuff in there, we'll make it, we take all those aluminum cans, and we make our, you know, millions of dollars. No, we pay to, to recycle all of those materials. We also have two collection facilities. One is in Trumbull County, that you guys write in our backyard. When you come to my meetings, you'll see it. We spend, we collect electronics, appliances, has household hazardous waste, which is like chemicals and solvents and oil-based paints, anything flammable, these light bulbs, stuff like that. We have two facilities, one here in Trumbull, one here and one in Geogga County, and those cost about half a million dollars a year for the disposal costs. Most of that is the HHW, the household hazardous waste, but we also pay for TVs. TVs are expensive to recycle. They're full of lead and other nasties. So that's where all of that money goes. And then we also have great litter programs. We have our Great American Cleanup Litter Program. We do community grants, which you will learn in February. We have tons of applications for our community grants. We usually give out about $350,000. So if you're doing the math, that's already 1.4 million dollars right there, just in these three programs out of our 1.9 that we get in. We do educational programs and things like that. All right. This is our plan. I'm not going to go into it today, but where, where we are currently with our five-year plan is we're now to the point where you guys are going to have to review the plan and approve it as a county. Each county has to approve it. And then I will have to go to all the different communities. I have to go to Hubbard Township. I'll have to go to Bayanna Township, all the cities, all the counties, all the villages, and each of them will have to approve the plan. That's in summertime, so I'll be doing a lot of, I have fifty-six communities. So I'll be visiting all of them one at a time and doing that. So this is just kind of a recap of what, what is in the plan. It's a five-page summary, six-page summary versus passing out a three-hundred-page document. So I just wanted to make you aware, very soon, we're going to have a public hearing and a public, a thirty-day public notice. You guys are going to get a notice of that. I'll have to officially send you a certified letter telling you that the, the public comment period has started, that we're going to have a public hearing. Just so when you get those things, you're not wondering what that is. It's just part of the process, which is on the very, very back page, the ratification. On the X. I don't, I don't have one. I know where it is. I, I stapled it in the middle. Okay, so the ratification timeline. So just so if you wanted to see where we're at, we're going to be doing our public comment hearing and our public hearing in March. So you're going to be getting a lot of official documentation for that, just so we prove to the EPA that we did our due diligence. It's going to be in the paper. It's going to, you know, we have to put it everywhere, out everywhere that we're doing a public comment period, so that people can weigh in on our three-hundred-page plan. Historically, no one ever comes to the hearing. So, you know, we try to get as much out as we can so that people can say where, what, what if they want to change, if they want to offer different programs. We're always looking to start new programs. We started three new programs since I've been in this job for five years. So we've started three new major programs since I started, so we're always trying to grow with the county and offer. In the plan, there's a couple of new ones that we're thinking of. We want to get into food waste. That's about 25% of the waste that goes into a landfill. We could capture some of that and compost it. That would be great for our numbers that we report to the EPA, which ironically reduces our funding. Because the more we take out of landfills, because we get paid by them out, because it's land, the more we divert, the better we do, the less money. So it's kind of an offset.
Usually is.
Yes, the less, the less funding we receive, the better we do. But we do want to start that. So if you guys have any questions.
But first, I want to thank you for the program, because I could tell you personally, me, we have more recycled than we do trash, you know, trash. And you have your bins. I know in Hubbard City and Township, you cover us well there, and they're, they're very well utilized. And service is great, and does a great service to our, you know, our soils and keeping these things out of those landfills.
Yeah, we have no landfills in Trumbull County, if you're not aware. We have no landfills in Trumbull or Geogga Counties. All of our trash gets shipped to, from here, gets shipped to Harvard Limestone Landfill in Lowell. So I mean, just so people are aware, our trash has to go on trucks and go someplace else. So anything that we can do to, and carbon limestone has about fifty years left of life, fifty to sixty years. So after fifty to sixty years, at its current rate of accepting waste, we're going to have to look elsewhere, or they're going to have to expand, and, you know, nobody wants more landfills. Nobody wants trash in their backyard. No one wants that kind of thing. So anything we could do to extend the life of that landfill is something that we are trying to do, to make it last a little bit longer, give us another ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years. So we don't have to start burying, because once it's in the landfill, it doesn't biodegrade, it doesn't break down. Most people think that, oh, it just turns into soil. No, they've, they dug into landfills seventy to a hundred years old, and the newspapers are still readable, the banana peels are still banana peels. Nothing biodegrades in there, or it does extremely slowly. So the things that we threw away a hundred years ago are still there, so it's not something that's going to go away. So anything we could do to divert it is what we're, what we, that's our job, to try and get that out of the landfill. And to keep nasty out of the landfill, like household hazards and soot.
Yes.
And lead, because that all reaches into the soil, and we want to prevent that as well.
I know a lot about landfills.
Yes. So you don't want a landfill in Hubbard, so let's, let's reduce what the trash we throw away. I'm all for that.
Commissioners, any questions?
It's a state-of-the-art facility there. I think you guys will enjoy the tour and the scene how they work. I mean, they just back with the TVs. I couldn't believe they, they must have two hundred TVs in the warehouse, and they're back there disassembling them, taking out the different parts to go to different places. And I mean, they got a really good staff there that, you know, we, we need to go to those meetings. That's something that, they've been some of the coolest meetings I've gone to in the last two years. You have the three Geogga, the three of us, and it's pretty neat to cross county line like that for the go.
And they have one commissioner, too, so my board is going to be happening, so it'll be, so it'll be a lot of.
In a quorum there, we have to have four.
You have to have four.
So we have to have one of us.
At least one must come, yes. And they drive all the way from Chardon, so they're, they drive an hour to come to our meetings, so.
Right. No excuse not to be there.
What's your numbers of staff?
I have four, me, me and three. Yeah, we're very, that's something we're going to have to discuss. Because our facilities are, are, are getting ridiculous. I mean, I don't, I don't need to say ridiculous. They're, they're super, super busy. Last year, we served somewhere around thirteen thousand residents at our two facilities, and I have two people who did that, too. So I have two, there's two of us who are in the office. There's me and my finance person. Her name's Lisa, and we do all of the office work, all of the paperwork, all of the regulatory work, everything like that, writing all the grants, yada, yada. And then the two people in the bathroom, all they do five days a week is process materials. Like he said, we should, we ship out about, we ship out at least one semi-load of TVs a month all year round, all, even in the winter. We ship a semi-load of TVs, 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 TVs. We ship all kinds of other electronics. We do a box truck of household hazardous waste a month at, this is at each facility, sorry. So we have a box truck at Geogga County and a box truck at Trumbull County, and we have a semi-truck at each. And in the summer, it's worse. In the summertime, usually when all you guys have your, your community cleanups and stuff, Hubbard Town, Hubbard City Township, you guys have an electronic drive, so you divert all that. They take the semi. But in the summertime, we generally do it every two weeks. We're, we're shipping out a truckload every two weeks. So we do a lot of material out of the landfills, and those two, my two folks are, are tired. And trying to get, we, we have requested temporary workers to come and work, and that used to work, but post-COVID, if it's hot, they don't come. If it's cold, they don't come. If they're, you know, they're tired, they don't come. And so it, it's very difficult to get you know, workers that are dependable. So we really need to hire, honestly, hire somebody to be full-time. We could, there's more than enough to keep them busy, because they, we go to all the drop-off sites, and we do cleanups at the drop-off sites and a lot of other things, so. Just, that'll be something we revisit in summertime. Not right now. It's not what we're working on the plan, but once the plan's done, we'll, we'll have to talk about staffing. But right now, there's only four of us, me and three people, so. Sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So any other departments, I know my.
I've got a question.
I've got a question, and I will go to.
Maybe. Maybe. No name.
Oh, thank you. I'm sandwiched on country.
I was getting ready to say.
Good with that.
No, my question is, if we're Trumbull County, in departments or buildings, is there places to recycle? I mean, you're shaking your head yes, like in a stone building, where is a place to recycle?
We have boxes here on our floor, so I'm up, like actual boxes from Geogga, Trumbull.
We're his offices.
Oh, yeah, like a stone building, that's right. I don't think so. I know downstairs there's stuff for the plastic bottles, but I don't see anything, I mean, for anything else over there.
Full or empty, like? Full or empty water bottle?
That, that is obviously something that we can provide. We can provide containers. The biggest struggle in public places is getting people to not use them for trash cans, put in bottles that are not full of liquids. And honestly, one of the biggest, one of the biggest challenges is getting the cleaning people to sort and take it and put it in the recycle bins versus just bagging it and taking out with the regular trash. That is a very common problem. They just, it's not worth their time. It's nighttime. There's nobody else here. They grab it, throw it out, and put it out with regular trash. So what's the point of having a container? So that's something that I, I talked to Bill Hart about it, and I know he's retiring, so when the new person comes in, I hope to sit down with that person and, you know, discuss what we can do, have a conversation, to see what we can do to make it easier
Yeah.
to be able to offer those programs in all of our buildings. I could provide containers. But if there's nobody to take it out to the recycle bin, then it's, it's really not use at all. Yes.
I do a question for you. I watched a show on TV recently, and they showed, they was talking about recycling, and they showed the landfill they were at, wherever it was. The guy there said they recycle stuff anyway. When it comes in, plastics go one way, cans go another way. Is that true at all, or are we paying to recycle stuff that the, that the landfill is going to recycle anyway when it gets?
No. The, that, I don't know where that was, but that's what's called a dirty MRF. Okay, I'm, I'm not going to use jargon. So once it goes to the landfill, ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the time, it's buried in a ground. I don't know what situation that was. Maybe it was extremely unique, but that is not what happens.
Made for TV.
It's made for TV. The, we, a MRF is a material recovery facility. That's where recycling goes. It's a whole bunch of conveyor belts. It's all the materials that are collected in my recycle bins get put on a garbage truck. It is a garbage truck, but it goes in a garbage truck, and it goes to a separate facility in a separate place. All of our stuff right now is going to Twinsburg. The company we use is called Kimball, and their facility is in Twinsburg. So all of that material goes to Twinsburg, gets, gets sorted and baled. All the plastics get put together, all the glass gets put together, metals, et cetera, and gets put in big veils, and they get sold to Pepsi to make new cans, or whoever to make new whatever it is. The landfill does not sort, because once it gets to a landfill, it's mixed, they tried that, actually, in Warren. It was called Neo, Neo Art. It just recently, like twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, they survived a year, because, and they went out of business. Once it's mixed with trash like tomatoes and, and squishy orange juice and stuff, most of the material that's, that's recyclable is so contaminated that Pepsi doesn't want it. Paper mills don't want it. It's soaked with garbage. And so anything that they were able to recover out of that landfill is virtually worthless. And so it's not even worth the money that they spent paying someone to sit and sort it to, to recycle it. Recycling is all about, it's a, it's a business. The companies, if you buy it, they're, they want to be able to make something out of it. They need to be able to make something out of it. And if it's at such a poor quality that they can't, then they're not going to buy it. So we have to clean our product up as much as possible and make it as sellable as possible, so that people, they make it into other things. So that is not true in here, and there's a lot of people who see that. They see garbage trucks come and pick up the recycling, and they say, oh, it's just going to trash anyway. Or they see a garbage truck go to a land, one of my recycling trucks might go to a landfill, but oftentimes, they're using it as, as a transfer station, where they will dump the recycling in one place, and then they'll pack it up and put it in a bigger truck and drive it all the way to the, to a MRF, to a recycling place, but it doesn't go in the landfill. It isn't going in. We're, we're recycling about five thousand tons of recyclables every year. Probably more than that, now that Kimball's taking over, they're doing a wonderful job. So we're going to be closer to six thousand tons now of, of material. So our stuff is getting recycled. The stuff that's supposed to be in the bins is getting recycled, and it's not in the landfill.
Commissioner, answer your.
Interesting. Sure does.
Beth Carmichael, Trumbull Tourism.
Thank you. There were two topics that were discussed at last week's meeting, and Julie and I have been having conversations. Trumbull Tourism and Trumbull Historical Society are tag-teaming the Ohio 250, and we'll be reporting back to you guys on January twenty-seventh meeting that's already been scheduled. And then on Mosquito Lake, the WADA, the David Joyce Appropriation, plus our Section 22 funding. I've been able to pull apart some of that information, and I can report out at another time. I could do it right now, but we are sorting through those two projects, so that we have a clear understanding. First and foremost, I think, from a Commissioner perspective, we want to make sure that we weren't paying for the same the facility, or, excuse me, feasibility studies, so, which each one of those projects does not, and a Section 22 project will help inform a future WADA project, as it's stated right now. Want more information? I can go in, little bit in the weeds. If you don't, I'm perfectly happy to just send you an email on it.
Do you think it's Julie Green, Trumpa County? Beth, just to expand on the WADA, it's not technically an appropriation. It's an authorization to include it in a future appropriation bill, so don't we have to apply for the funds in the future?
So, yes, WADA is the appropriation. So one of Representative Joyce's priorities was to do a Mosquito Lake Erosion Feasibility Study. And that's what he put into the WADA that was announced first in December. So there was an announcement that that was going into the bill, and the bill was passed by the House of Representatives. The announcement that happened last week through Representative Joyce's office is that the Mosquito Lake project is of what's the word? Is it appropriated?
Authorized.
The project. The project is authorized, but it is not appropriated, meaning that it's in the WADA, but there's no money that's been put to it. And if there's no money that's been put to it, most likely, it's not going to get funded. Talking to Army Corps of Engineer staff, the first time that could get funded is in twenty twenty-seven. If it's appropriate. So you've got the um authorization, and then you need the appropriation. The appropriation doesn't have the project associated with money. Most likely, I'm not saying it's impossible. Most likely, that project isn't gonna get funded. There are projects within WADA that have already been authorized and appropriated, that then needs to go to both the House and the Senate. And it's still competing for other projects for the general appropriations for the full government budget. So there's yet another step in that process. WADA requests are typically the, on the low end, two to three million dollars. And our um, the section twenty-two program that we're working through right now is a half a million dollar project with a request for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of local match. So even if we could get a fees of, an erosion feasibility study, all of that, it would most likely cost us more than what we're doing right now. And I've been told by the Army Corps of Engineers that the projects within the section twenty-two are going to help inform any future WADA projects.
Thanks, Beth.
You're welcome.
Julie, Julie Green, one more comment. So the vindicator article that I was asked to follow up on that mentioned that mosquito lake and Niles projects were funded.
Um, I honestly, I haven't looked at the
The vindicator article. So that's just in error. But in reality, it was included in a bill, authorized in a bill, for it to move forward to the next step.
Correct.
And I, and I think that that's important. I think that was the question the commissioners had was, is it actually funding, or is it not? And then it's not.
And it can top us to be a priority for Representative Joyce's office, along with several other projects within this northeast Ohio region. So.
Question I got then, if it's, if it's into that, and you said that usually things five million dollars or more, is it?
They said, um, another response, which Julia hadn't shared with you, but I got yesterday, was usually these WADA requests, they're a fifty-fifty match, and they are usually, um, they're typically run in multi-million dollars, generally three to four million dollars or more. So the big, just in general, the big WADA projects that were moved forward that had this bill, these billion, ten billion dollars associated with, was an Everglades project, was a flood control project in Jersey on the coast, was a um I don't know, I can't remember the other, but there were big, long, like Stanton Island, um, there were twenty-one, they called them mega projects. Everglades, Louisiana flooding issue, coastal storm and flood risk, um, in New York stands islands, was just three of several projects. Um, but mo- those three took up most of the ten billion dollars that was spent.
I mean, so there's our way to tie in mosquito lake region sanitary with our fairgrounds, which is dumping into the lake, or tie in something with there for sewer lines around the lake to make it a bigger project, so it becomes a bigger project, and its feasibility study could tie into this, where if they're appropriate big money, we need millions to put sewer lines up beside a road or a forty-six.
And
to make a, could we tie it in somehow?
So certainly, and Gary is much more well-versed than the tourism person is, but I think it's something that we could certainly look at in the future.
I mean, if they authorize mosquito lake region, this is mosquito lake region, if there's a way we can tie that in and make it a bigger project, may even help David Joyce get the money appropriate. He's on appropriations committee to appropriate the money. If he's gonna do it, he's got the door open. See if we can kick the door wide open and see if we can
And when we look, here's what I'll say is, and again, this isn't, Gary has much more information. Have you done WADA projects before?
What is WADA now?
It's the Water Resource Development Act from the Army Corps of Engineers.
I've gotten section five ninety-four grants.
Okay, so this is Right, so this is different than that, which is
Okay.
When I saw the bills that they actually authorized and appropriated, these were pages long of detailed information as to what needs to happen. So it's not what ours says, which is a erosion study for mosquito lake feasibility.
They haven't said that.
But yeah, it says a feasibility study for mosquito lake.
It just says mosquito lake project here in the act.
And then the National Wonderin', we're under mandate from the Corps of Engineers, when we signed our fifty-year permit, to lessen our phosphorus and nitrogen loading into the lake through our station there. And, but they didn't have a way to measure the nitrogen. So Gary was able to work with the Corps of Engineers, and the conference call that was on that we're doing this, this, and this for phosphorus, but nitrogen, we're gonna make steps towards it, but there was no measurable way to do it, and we just needed to move in that direction to lessen the nitrogen. That's, that was a mandate that came from the Corps. Maybe this permit, but you have to do this. To me, if it's Corps of Engineers involved, they're telling us we gotta do this, sewer and water lines could do that. There's gotta be a tie in here somewhere, I'm guessing, or there could be, and if, and if it is vague and ambiguous, let's fill it. Let's fill that shopping cart.
I would continue to advocate at this point that we get this first section twenty-two program done to give baseline of a lot of these things that we haven't had baseline for a long time. That is, to your point several months ago, it's the Army Corps staff that's doing it. They're the ones that are asking us to do this other stuff. So we've got the same department doing everything that they're asking to be done. So if we, and that's what I'm hearing, is if we get section twenty-two funding or program up and moving, then we can get these baseline studies, and frankly, and it, we can have these completed by late next fall. Um, based on their scope of work in their done, work done by their staff.
All right, uh, Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer, uh commissioner, he did ask me to try to come up with some kind of cost, and it's see that sewer, try to get it up there along the west side of the lake. I was finally able right before Christmas, I found a study that was done for that lake shore a lot of it. And it does show me the proper problem that we're gonna intercept it on them. And all I've done so far is be able to look into that and see what the uh, routing of the silver is in order to uh, complete the project for the general point. Uh, I'm trying to get into it more in order to get us some sort of cost. I don't see, I wasn't gonna be able to go back, back into wetlands behind a Walmart, put in twenty-four in sewers, because that's what it's called. I I I envision a pump station or a direction that crosses wetlands. So, trying to take that plan and convert it into, you know, pump stations, horse space, or even the same thing, go across the dam. Uh, we're gonna, that's gonna have to be a pump station down there somewhere on the west side of the lake, or along three oh five, probably around the entrance part. Pump station there, then send that all the way down to there's more. So, um, sort of trying to piece it all together, the best way to make this happen. Uh, use a pump station. Uh, in a fire penalty center. So, I am working on.
I appreciate that. Because what I was saying is, we may not, this board may not solve sanitary septic problems in the north part of the county, but if we don't lay the first brick, it'll never get that. And that's something we need to work towards for townships in the northern tier, north of three oh five. They've got septic, they don't have water in a lot of areas, and around the mosquito lake corridor, you have a few landlords own a lot of property. And to tie them in and charge upfront, it was, is unreasonable ask. So if we're ever gonna get it, we're gonna need, we're gonna need some federal assistance with that. Dave Joyce's office, Congressman Joyce's office has said, hey, let's look at it. You know, it's, it's something to be done. There's more rural areas in Ohio that have got sanitary than Trumbull County. Yes, there's a lot southeastern Ohio, there's the whole, you know, Ashvila is received a lot more than we have in a lot of areas also when it comes to that stuff. And Lake County's gets, you know, water and sewer everywhere. Um, so there are areas that this could be done, but it's gonna take you know, Steve Lotred did a lot for Lake County. Hopefully, Congressman Joyce can do a lot for Trumbull, Ashvila. And that means a thing, and especially with his, you know, newly appointed appropriations committee and stuff, that's that could be a big deal for us.
I I understand. We need to get some sort of cost together.
Right. Yeah, we need that. We don't know what our ask is. That's what they tell us. How much do you need?
Right.
Enough. I don't, you know, we need, that's where Gary needs to come in and say, is it thirty million? Is it sixty million? Is it fifteen million? What can we, you know, what's our number?
Right now, that number is somewhere between ten and fifteen, as far as I can tell right now. I mean, it's just you know, throw a number on it.
Thank you for that.
All right.
Beth, thank you for
Every time you said water, it reminded me of somebody from New York.
Maybe that's why they named it that way.
All right, uh, Gary Newbrough, commissioner, can I keep the floor here? I I got some other table.
Oh, sure.
See, all right, the first two documents there, those are those public hearings coming up. Uh, you can see here, next Thursday, February fifth, that's the state line road, uh, public hearing. Okay, January twenty-third is the February fifth is the state line road. These are just documents, if you aren't familiar, so, know your eyes self, project, or the book we're carrying. Uh, these are just reference material, if you'd like to uh, see some of the details regarding that. Uh, add to public hearing, I will give you folders, whatever, all this in it, plus additional documents also. So you'll be fully prepared after the public hearing. There's actually a script in here, uh, you know. Uh, I put this one here, I'm sorry, but I still have commissioner below eight years, it's just looking at commissioner. I'll revise that and get it in there for Yeah, that's against sewer road, we did that before.
All right, now, Commissioner Bernard asked me last week to give him a list of the projects.
Oh, that's, are you, are you interested? Once you get to those spreadsheets, yes. I got another spreadsheet. The first page are projects that we've already completed. And the top box are the ones that were in the consent decree areas. Okay? And you can see here, if you look at that project cost, go down to the line subtotal, so far in the consent decree areas, we put in seventy-eight, uh seventy-eight and a half million dollars. That old road is still under construction. That's why that's in the yellow. And then you can see the various funding sources that we use to cover all of those project costs. The bottom half of the spreadsheet, these are uh water and sewer extension projects that we built that were not in consent decree areas. They were given as a result of petitions for an economic development project or something other than a consent decree project. And you can see that we did about forty-nine million uh in these areas. And so our tally right now on our sewer extension projects is a hundred and twenty-seven, six million dollars. Of that, we've been able to cover over fifty-two percent of that with grant funds. Uh, this is since the inception of the consent decrees. So this is our track record. The ones in yellows are the ones that are currently under construction. Uh, Meadowbrook, Yankee Lake, Elkhorn, and State Road Water Regionalization, and Stillville Drive Sewer. All right, go on to the second sheet, you did just leave us a work we have to get done here. Uh, the consent decree projects are at the top. Uh, the sewer petition projects are in the middle uh box. And water projects are the third box. And you can see that we still have uh about seventy-eight million dollars worth of projects that need to be built. And we're trying to get as much grant funds as possible. Um, there are a couple in there for American Rescue Plan uh funds, uh, the commissioners uh graciously gave us funds to help uh pay for that. You can see there's about two million dollars left on uh on the ARP appropriations for these projects, total those up. But right now, my main problem is the first one on this sheet, Pendleton Gilmer. That's the second part of the Meadowbrook project. This is pretty it's in that consent decree area, and for us to build the future uh phases of that project, we need Pendleton Gilmer. And that's why I'd like to look at the last portion. Last thing I gave you here. This project was nominated back in September from principal forgiveness. Uh, it's one of the best nominations I've ever written. I mean, I had everything in there from uh wetland, those wetland reports to storage preservation offices, clerics, uh, OGNR, uh US Fish and Wildlife Clarence, uh, you name it, everything that gives you say, put into that nomination. And you go to the third sheet, the side here. And they gave state line road principal forgiveness. And didn't give bounty to the principal forgiveness. Uh, we needed a four million of principal forgiveness. And that note that says bypass says that, uh, they only give out one principal forgiveness award to each uh government entity. And it's gonna be the lowest dollar value, one of it. Now, back in two thousand twenty-three, we ran into the same problem. When they awarded uh Yankee Lake with principal forgiveness instead of Meadowbrook. So I, you know, they didn't tell us the rules back in twenty-three before they let us in on this. And twenty-four, Meadowbrook did get the principal forgiveness, even though I submitted other ones of lesser value, because I put on the cover sheet, I don't want this project considered for principal forgiveness, give it to Meadowbrook. So that's how Meadowbrook ended up scoring number one in the state. We got the four million. Now, you look past these sheets, you can see right here. These are the cover sheets here that I sent in with the nomination, clearly delineating it. Like I did for the, for the Meadowbrook project last year. Here's the state line road cover sheet. The county does not request principal forgiveness for this project, since a mortgage need is needed to be approved for Pendleton Gilmer. In other words, we don't want principal forgiveness for this, we need for Pendleton Gilmer. Next sheet, that's St. Stewart, same, same thing. We don't want principal forgiveness here, we need it on Pendleton Gilmer. Next sheet. We don't want, we don't want it here, we want it for, I mean, I'm pointing, I'm pointing Pendleton Gilmer, Pendleton Gilmer, Pendleton Gilmer. And then you get the cover sheet for Pendleton Gilmer. Here's Pendleton Gilmer, give me your principal forgiveness, okay? So this is how it was, essentially, the same way we did Meadowbrook last year, where they did give it to me for Meadowbrook. Somehow, this is the garbage that we got back. Then, uh, but it not ranking that into the funded range. Now, this is a draft, and we have until look under that public participation. It's out for public comment until uh next Tuesday, January twenty-first. There's a hearing of course is down at Columbus. I plan on attending that. And I have already sent uh fifty emails, I've already sent to them, letting them know hey, the county wants reconsideration of this, with the draft, with the proper procedure, how do we get the principal forgiveness for Pendleton Gilmer? So, uh, anyway, if you can read my, uh, my, my remarks to them, trying to get this uh back. And this is a very, this has thrown all my plans for the sewers, that just threw a wrench in their whole everything, the whole schedule. We don't get this principal forgiveness for, for this Pendleton project. I'm gonna have to send back the OPWC money for that too, because they, they won't give me the grant agreement until I get this principal forgiveness. Uh, there's, it throws a wrench into Julie over there with the CDBG for this project. I just can't understand how Meadowbrook, same application, everything else, number one to stay last year, got to four million dollars. I just can't understand how Meadowbrook, same application, everything else, number one to stay last year, got the four million dollars. And Pendleton, almost the exact same characteristics of a project. That it didn't get it, and somehow they gave it to state line road.
Gary, have they responded to your question, Joe?
The only responses I've gotten back was I, I reminded, you can see here. I reminded, my two contacts down there, Martha Stephanoff and Carrie Chang. I like to speak with, I, after that initial email, I like to speak with somebody about this. You know, why did I only get a five million rate as the proceed, not a six? Why, why is this like this? And she said she wrote, she looked in, Brian, uh, Lake and Steve Malone, boss in Columbus. So anyway, I have less voicemails with Ryan Lake and Steve Malone, I'm waiting for them to call me back, but I, I'm not getting any feedback on this at all. And the last sheet of this, this is the entire staff of the Division of Environmental Financial Assistance down there. I mean, if we, if we can, I'm an engineer. You guys know people to put political pressure on this, the, the, from another angle?
Well, I was gonna ask if he contacted our state legislature, state reps, you know?
That, that, yeah, I have not.
Well, I, I would definitely do that, and let them, uh, that's State Senator, uh. Candy O'Brien, Nick Santucci, and Dave Thomas, let them all know what you're going through. Um, and, uh, you know, Nick, he's the majority whip now, and he can help us out.
All right, okay, well, I, I.
I would definitely, definitely get a call into them, we can call them.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's.
You call them, we'll call them, and, and, and just see if we can get some help on this.
Okay.
Gary, you wanna mention the population figures I sent you?
Oh, Julie sent me the population figure, look, you got it with you.
Those four counties, they got sixteen million, their combined population, all four counties, which isn't even their beneficiaries, is a hundred and sixty thousand people. So they gave out sixteen million dollars to a combined area that serves. What, eighty percent of Trumbull County's population? I don't know, you know, what, what the benefiting property, project service area looks like. It's just, it's disproportionate, it's been disproportionate for many years, they've changed the rules to. In my opinion, catalyze larger counties.
Right.
Um.
I, I lived in Pike County for five years, and I mean, we have. Less than ten thousand in our county. Um.
What are the other counties, if you don't mind me asking?
Let's see, are they, Ohio and Lee Water Sewer Authority, that's involved in Row County. Union County.
Pike County.
Uh, Pike County and Athens. And here's another one for Athens, down here lower. Yeah, well, there's one for Hamilton, isn't that the same area?
That's a bigger town.
That's a bigger, they did get. But I, I mean, this is just, uh, I, I don't see how any project could be more worthy than that Pendleton project. Consent decree, LMI area, two hundred and ninety connections. I mean, what more, what, what, what project would have more need than this one statewide?
But you do have a hearing next Tuesday, you're gonna do Tuesday.
Yes, and I want this commissioner to want to accompany me, you'd be more than you're welcome, but that's up to you. Um, and, uh, I will reach out to. Um, the other politicians, I was hoping that I could resolve this with the bureaucrats down there in Columbus. Resolve this issue, get somebody's respect. Like them calling back, oh, Gary, we didn't realize you wrote that on your cover sheet, and you didn't want to. I was hoping to get all that resolved, so I didn't have to bring this to you. But now, here we are, we're a week out, and me and Snow walk out. So, uh.
Well, I definitely try to get a, get a hold of our state.
Yeah, before, before you go next week, let's hook you up with their talks.
More about it than we do, and, and, you know, for the questions, and you can just tell them that the board's, you know, puts all in the rhythm, you know.
I, I actually have a meeting. A Zoom call with the Deputy Director of EPA, Matt Johnson.
Oh, now that's who we need to talk to.
That's, it's over the damn two, we had this scheduled yesterday through the governor's office, so.
All right.
That's something that'll be coming up by the end of this week or beginning of next week.
All right, well, I gave you enough information in this little handout here, if you wanna say, well, let's talk about that draft EMP for WPCL. And so then. You know, we, we said that we wanted principal forgiveness for Pendleton Gilmer, but no, the penalty ranked ahead of it.
And we'll lose, uh, one point five million in grants if we don't get that.
Yeah.
Because it's, you can't.
Can you, I hate to, I know you gave us this, but can you summarize what you just said to me? Draft EMP for whatever it was, this and that.
Program your program.
Like what we stand to lose, though.
Large yard, WPCLF, BMP.
But Julie, like what you said, what we would wreck, lose, can we get that like one little cheat sheet email, that if I get the guy on the phone or on Zoom, I could say. I get my one, one paragraph thing that sounds like I know what I'm talking about.
We're gonna, we're gonna lose another million and a half in grants.
That's, that's what, write it down for me, so that I have that, those notes and all.
It also impacts all the future phases.
Yeah, it backs up all the other future phases too.
And this is something that I'll, I'll reach out to Nick Santucci and David Thomas. Uh, Commissioner Bernard, he reached out to Sandy Bernard, or Sandy, uh. And we'll, we'll get to the same scripts, around the same script, and then I'll, I'll reach out to the.
Give me that too, so, all three made it, they know that we need this.
But I think Gary should too, because he, he knows, he knows so much about it.
Of course, well, when I talk to them, I'm gonna set up a call with them, directly with Gary.
We need cheat sheet, reach out to them too, or?
Yes, well, just cheat sheet first, uh.
And, and then we can all just reach out.
All right, you all just wanna wait for me to, when I get back to the office after now.
Write us a script, write us a one-page, a one-page.
Talking point if you're on the phone.
Correct, what we're asking for, and give us some background info, so that they could take that, and I could just say, hey, I'll email this to you. And then they can carry that cheat sheet into when they go talk to EPA Director of the Governor.
And, and also, Gary, if you would just, you know, put your, your phone number on here, so we can give those to, you know, state people. If you have any questions, you're con- contact Gary.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, not at all.
Yeah, well, make it as dummy proof as possible for us.
Okay. But I am highly disappointed on this, and, uh, I was hoping to get a result by now.
Well, you guys have done.
Very disheartening.
And it could be.
Yeah.
But for you guys to have gotten fifty-nine percent or whatever of all these sewer water things between Julie and you, funded. Uh, through grants is unbelievable, I mean, seventy-eight million dollars, they give more than half of it. Other people's money.
Right.
Um, that's.
Our total is a hundred and twenty-seven million, we got fifty-two percent of that.
Yeah, that's, that's unbelievable, so, we appreciate that, and. We'll back you up on this as best we can.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the other departments.
Sorry, keep ya. One more thing, Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning, I just got the, um, praise proposals back from the elevators. Wanted to bring it up to you.
Seeing.
Uh, just need to, need money, and I'll think of it. That's so.
These are some looking at, I'm sure you've managed.
This came in like, like, this, these things just broke, like post-starcraft.
Oh, you talked about the elevators?
Yeah.
The elevator that we currently have, did you use it this morning?
No.
Your mark, I, I wouldn't recommend anybody, so it was installed, I believe, in nineteen fifty-four. It was built.
I know.
So.
We discussed it with, uh, records lady down below.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not having boxes without. Right.
They're not, I can tell you that. Uh, so the, the elevator replacement is three thirty-four, one eleven. That's through Sourcewell, I'd also ask for an additional, uh, quote for eleven three item for our front entranceway, which you all seem, it's. Scary. Uh, and to update that, that, that's another thirty thousand dollars. To get can, uh, accessible doors for not just our door. And I also mentioned that archives needs an accessory.
Oh, we also talked about the archives, Commissioner Bernard and I were there, and the security there is Neil. I really believe that.
We don't have any.
No. Right, and they're walking off the street, asking those ladies for money. I think we're gonna need to look at similar thoughts, something for them, we're gonna have to, you know.
To reserve a plan for fobs on that.
And they're asking. Should be. It should be, and it's a security issue.
The entire county is full security assessment, especially on its buildings. So, but this, this building is pretty well covered, but the rest of buildings, Tom, or, I know that, uh. John has come to me several times, looking to get quotes, that we need to get funding, so. It's, there. There's a lot of work needs to be done.
Yeah, those are issues, especially, you know, records are one thing, but protecting, protecting, when we, you know, those employees. You know, uh, security, right, so.
Yeah, Commissioner, what I, I, what I was thinking, I'm just thinking out loud, the two million that came from. Karen Infam, Alan, she wanted appropriated something, and asked when she gave that to us, if we appropriate to something that. Is a special, important thing, and we talked about all these other things. I think maybe with the security thing, security of the buildings, might be, if, might be a wise use, if you're talking thirty grand or whatever it is. To, to remove out of that fund. I mean, I, I think just some of your prioritize, if it's gonna be the safety of county employees, I think that's something that kinda meets the criteria of what that. Two million emergency rainy day fund thing might be for.
And, and I agree with you, and I would take that to the next step, and also use that for the Sheriff's Department. You know, you and I took a tour, and, and, you know, we have some issues there, but, yeah, I would like to appropriate that money strictly for. Security, for the jail, maybe for nine-one-one, and not just put it into the general fund.
Right, well, it's not in the general fund, we, we have more to make up a separate account for it, but there's two million, but if we appropriated. Say twenty-five percent of it to put to safety, security, safety of the county, then I agree with you, that meets the standard.
Maybe, or whatever the sheriff may need, you know, he, he's presently trying to go through that, you know, areas, you know, maybe we should make that money available for her. For those two agencies.
I would, Tase McDonald, nine-one-one director, I was just gonna say. While that two million gift is amazing, and it sounds like there's more special projects than there are two million dollars, so. I mean, the Sheriff's Department already has a decent building, they already have vehicles to go to. Things, I, I'm still pushing for nine-one-one's a priority, I know, I know you guys are tired of hearing me say it. I do have good news on, on one aspect, if you do put up a tower, the landfill, um, it's looking like that will be a viable option.
Where?
Or, I, I, yeah, sorry, it's at the fairgrounds.
Yeah, don't start that, Rob.
My great East County, it's at the landfill, our, our big tower was, and we, guys were talking about the landfill, that's what I said, it was stuck in my brain. Um, at the fairgrounds, if you guys do put up a tower there, um, that looks like it will be a viable, uh. Spot for us to utilize, um, so that would save us money for our project, potentially, if we do get the authorization to move, um. I know you guys are still talking into budgets, I just kinda wondered, do you have a timeline for when we will know if there's money available for us to move? Or, or when that kinda will be, because the RFQs are out right now for, for the, uh. Coltons, so, I obviously, you know, I, I know there's a big question of, you know, you're waiting for me, and I, I can't do anything without funding.
Right, we just got a lot, most of the numbers just came in, so we're looking at.
I, I would say within the next two weeks, we should have our budget finalized through the departments, and then our next main order of business will be. To address the corner, nine-one-one, and, uh, the dog pound. It, then we need to make a priority is our next thing. Now, the security thing, of course, will be something. Tim, you're always working on upgrading security, and working with the sheriff, that's a security issue, especially for the evidence room and, uh.
And that's what that might be useful.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm thinking, the same thing, it all ties in with that. Um, you know, even the security camera outside that room, if we're gonna utilize that room, and that, you know, security in that part of it, you know, security. Definitely rises, the cream rises to the top. Now, out of the rest of the money, that's in there, we can figure that out, we do need to figure. This, cause we can't go any further with this, and then Bill Hart, who's not with us here today. He started on this tower thing, we need to make that a priority with him before he leaves in February. To turn that information over to somebody else, I don't know.
I do have that.
Okay, Tim, is that a project you can?
Yes.
Chair, or you can be in charge of? Okay, then I would, I would ask and get, and ask for a second, from Commissioner, to have you move forward on exploring the possibility of a tower there. Not only for nine-one-one, but communication at the fair, leasing it out, making an income for the county off of cell phone providers. But you continuing forward with that, of one of these general.
Guys have the fairgrounds, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I agree.
Commissioner, say. Tim, do we have any idea how much, so, we do know how much it costs to fog, you know, here, and we've done fogs slowly but surely. Do we have any idea, maybe like a percentage of that two million that we would need, just so we can have some sort of informed. Conversation, and then would there be enough to do the one point five million dollar marks, or the tower at the. I think I heard Bill say it was roughly one point five at, at the fairgrounds, and then additionally use the, uh, other. Remaining funds to do the security, and even kinda get a lot done with two million.
Well, I don't wanna tie, I don't wanna tie that two million in, uh, with the tower, tower's gonna make its own money. That's a bond or something, we're gonna make the money back.
Okay.
Cause we'll get income off of that.
How much do you think then going back to security, though?
I, I would say with security, at this point right now.
Let's just put the money there, and then we can always pull it back out.
Right, well, what I, what I would say, I'd make a, a recommendation, let's take two hundred and fifty thousand of it, and see what you can do with two fifty. To secure the buildings that we need, I think that'll be, should be more than enough, we're talking thirty grand for this, thirty grand for that.
Right.
We should be able to hit the immediate things that need upgraded right now.
Make sure that we please, so, we all obviously always think about Gary, I can. Oh, I'm so sorry, Alex Stephen Jensen Bush, um. I'm really sorry, Trumbull County Human Resources, I'm concerned about all the outliers, like, I, if we're gonna do this. We should be doing it for every outlier building, not just haphazardly, one, two, three, right, not just because Julie. And I, I agree, I mean, done, but not just because they're the ones here, we should be collectively doing this for every single building, and that is not right here centrally located. Cause that's not fair to everybody, if we're gonna do it, we should be doing it countywide, I would name, but that's your words.
Well, he has to do an assessment analysis of what we have out there.
Yeah, cause there's twenty-three buildings in this county.
Right, but, but the courts and stuff already have their security done, there's some of the other buildings already have. Security up way further than what we have even here.
Some do, some don't.
Julie, Julie Green, Trumbull County, we have an architectural barrier study that's done, I don't know if that's part of the analysis, it's on, it's online. But I do wanna bring up something, if you're going to do that for the countywide, all the buildings, I think that's a great idea. But for efficiency sake, uh, regarding installing those key fobs. The door we have in place is older than I am, which is pretty old. So, I would recommend that we also take a look at replacing those doors on archives in our front office, I don't know about the rest of the buildings. To, and also to include some sort of, you know, accessible. Even if you don't do it with the security feature, at least leave it open to have it hooked up to electrical, so it is an accessible door. Where you have the button on the outside, I just wanted to add that, cause it definitely does need to be done.
They may make it to that anyway.
And we may have to, that's, that's exactly what I was gonna say.
They have to do it.
Yeah, Alex Stephen Jensen Bush, Media Better, Human Resources Department, those are all things that we just need to make sure we're collectively looking at, just to your point, once you touch it. So with ADA, it's very clear. A lot of our stuff is not ADA compliant, but it's what's called, you know, grandfathered in. But once you touch it and start making changes to things, then you have to elevate it to ADA accessible environment. So we have to be very cautious of that, so, you know, we gotta look into those things, and we do have a study, uh, ADA study, so we need to look into all of that collectively. And make sure that, again, if we're doing something, probably should be doing it from start to finish correctly, so that way we don't have to go back. We didn't just put fog systems in, then have to go replace a door five years later, that makes absolutely no sense, and that's more cost, that's just more cost than law. So.
I agree, but as long as we put that two million in there, because the sheriff's got some needs too, Danny, that you and I both know about.
Hey, boy, it's in its own account right now, it's in its own earmarked, special.
Some other, she said yes, so we can address all of that.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, we'll.
I, I had a couple words of business, Commissioner, if I could, that I had here. First, there's, um, the CCAO new commissioner training, February twenty-sixth, twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Are you gentlemen planning on attending, and if you are, we want to cancel the meeting for that week, or remove the meeting?
That's what I was just gonna say, I, let me see where I'm at with this.
Right.
Uh, what's our deadline on?
Well, February eighth, they said for your, uh, for room reservations.
Oh, okay. I, I would plan on it, um, I don't know where this is going, so.
Okay, Commissioner, just think about it, and then devise, that would be a plan. And then secondly, um, John Hickey sent an email over, wanted us to know who our representative was gonna be on the EMA board. Uh, I'd like to stay there if I could, you know, I'm, I'm on the EMA board now, they said it was the first commissioner to show up in ten years, so.
Review one.
No, I have no problem.
Okay, and then the nine-one-one review board, we just voted everybody in on that, and I. And then the nine one one review board, we just voted everybody in on that and I was the one voted in on that. Can I stay there on that? Okay, and then.
There's an agenda item, Taste McDonald and I don't want to drink. There's an agenda item for next week to appoint the new sheriff, just so you guys have a sense of that.
And then, um. Uh, towns of associations tomorrow or Thursday night, it's their annual meeting, which I recommend that the commissioners go to that. Um, and then. We can make the reservation when we do have meetings like this. If, if all three are going or whatever, we can have our schedule or we can have Cheryl call over and then she pays.
I already made my own personal reservation.
That's fine, but, but we could just let the chair know or let schedule know and then they do that for us.
She can do that for me. I've, I've talked to her, but I haven't made a formal reservation, but if you want.
Okay, then well, you and I will have made reservations for the two of us.
Oh, you might as well. You're already.
I already made it for, um, away from myself.
And, uh. I don't think there's any others that I see.
Sammy.
Oh, yes.
Julie Green. Uh, yeah, I think I was gonna call Sam this morning and I didn't get a chance to, but I think you're gonna have to look at land bank and you can assign alternatives to that as well.
We do.
So last year I was the alternative one of the commissioner.
Okay, so we have land bank and we also have the investment.
Which you could still get by the church.
Pardon me?
She could still be the order.
Sure, sure. So those are ones, I don't know the dates of those or we could deal with those now or, you know, the makeup. These were the ones that I knew about off the top of my head and then. With as far as the, uh. Uh, solid waste and, uh, district board. You'll be on the executive committee or whatever for next, next week's meeting and then the week, weekend after. The three of us or for the general meeting. Whenever it was, I don't know if it was next week or.
Uh, February.
February fifth and then February eleventh will be the other one or, yeah.
Is the eleventh is the. Which one is?
February eleventh.
Fifth or eleventh, cause I have eleven there.
Yeah, it's one on the fifth and one on the eleventh. One at one and one at two.
Yes, on the fifth is the executive committee. That's the, the president of the board. The eleventh is all three of us.
But we'll get that on our schedule, right, please?
Okay. And then the fifth also, of course, that evening, we have the Brookfield here. So you have a meeting, one or two, Rick, and then the Brookfield meeting later that night.
Sheriff, I have a, I get a chance to give you sure. In Commissioner Roy, what it is, is, uh, passing the board that we've got the resolution to send down to state representatives and state senator. Passing them, you know, with the, uh, increase in the property tax, asking the state legislature to revisit that, the, oh, the property tax for the. Own the residents of Chomo County and for all the residents of State Ohio. I think presently the state of Ohio has the sixth largest property tax in the nation. That's just, I'm, I'm having. And, um. And the copy would go to all state legislatures and to the, uh, House Ways and Means Committee and the Senate. Ways and Means also.
And something needs to be done and I think, you know, there are other states where. The homesteading is much different. They calculate that homestead. Actually, we're not getting the full homestead. Uh, you know. Elimination. Also, um, there is a. There is a, um, spousal, spouse dies, there's a revision in there that. You know, they, they lose that, those, you know, social security, what have you, where they give, uh. The remaining spouse a credit, tax credit on the property taxes. Some of these things are, you did look at, I talked to, uh, David Thomas about it. And of course, you know, he's only one person, but this is a start. We really, as commissioners, I think it's our duty to push this and. To relieve these property taxes that have continued to escalate. It's not done, it's not done on a county level. It's done on the state level. A lot of people don't understand that, so I don't want, you know, Martha or Bama Kus, anybody, that's not there. This is on a state level, so. We really need to pay attention to getting these. Reevaluated. You buy a home for a hundred grand. And then by the time you're reassessed thirty years later, you're paying a fortune even, and you didn't sell your house.
And I talked to Representative Thomas Danzantucci and State Senator Ryan about this and this is the first step.
Right.
And, and I think, I think, I think we're gonna see some movement.
Commissioner Lloyd does state.
I think we're gonna see some movement with this, you know, with the state hopefully, but you know, it just. People have fixed incomes and are, are veterans and they're making.
Right, and even the Mahoney commissioners have done something, you know, last year in advance of this. I don't know where they're with it. Where they got with it as of now, but.
We probably should send a copy of this to the county commissioners.
Yeah, I even think that maybe it'd be a good idea even to team up with the Mahoney County Commissioners on something like this on a whole valley level.
Yeah, well, we'll get this on the books and then we'll see what we can do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And, and the prosecutor's office also.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, can we add this to the agenda?
Sure.
Do you want me to put it for the executive sessions?
Yes, yeah, executive sessions, we're gonna lose people because after executive session, then we're gonna get into budget stuff and. We're gonna lose people along the way. Let's take care of the. Stuff with that, we could. Um, is Sheriff still here? She. Or she had lunch from now until morning.
No, she's still here.
Sheriff, if you're listening, can you come in? She has the budget stuff. She made copies of she, and I want her to just explain this to us. How she categorizes so we can understand it better when we do it tonight.
Yeah, she, she, yeah, she, uh. I didn't get a chance to look at it, but.
We have.
She said she may.
Oh, she's at a meeting?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
David, do you have anything?
No, no.
We're here for the ride.
I want to see Danny.
What? Anybody else, anybody else?
I only have one other question and I don't know. Commissioner Lloyd. I, I, you've got some paperwork and I, and I got emailed from the Zeta Township. About that. Money.
Oh, the Walker, the, I guess, from prosecutor Danzo. Can you kind of brief the new commissioners on the Zeta Township auditor thing? Cause that was something I know you had involvement in. And I, I don't know where our place is with that, so rather near for you.
You know, I'll, I'll just move over here a little bit closer if that's okay. Um, Bill Danzo Prosecutor's Office, there's only so much I can brief the commissioners on because. We represent both Zeta Township, the county auditor and the county commissioners, so we have a conflict. We had a conflict in that matter. As soon as it became apparent, it was a dispute between Zeta Township and, uh, the county auditor. County auditor did retain with the board's permission outside counsel that was unconflicted to, to advise her in her office. Uh, the Board of Commissioners not really having a role in the matter at that time did not get outside counsel. Uh, if the board is gonna need legal advice on that, for whatever reason, it would have to probably consider retaining outside counsel. That did not face a conflict in this. Um, with that being said, because this matter is. Uh. Still a disputed issue between two of our clients. I don't really think there's much I can fill the board in with it. We haven't been involved in it either. Uh, that would be something that you guys would maybe even wanna, you know, if, if you wanted to as a board, talk to the auditor's office, talk to Zeta Township. Uh, but right now the dispute appears to be at this point between those two offices and those two agencies, so. Uh, to the extent that the board believes it should or can be involved, you know, that's something that we probably have to. You know, we'd assist you if you wanted outside counsel on it, getting that to happen, but I'm not sure if that's where the board wants to go or not.
With, with, with the commissioner, basically. Zeta Township was hacked. They sent an email to the auditor. The auditor released money to a bank account. It was a fraudulent bank account, but, but, which was. Deemed to be a legal account in the, in the state, but it was a fraudulent. Place where they put it wasn't approved by Zeta Township. So the FBI had to get involved. Legal counsel got involved on both ends. Zeta had reached out to us and said, hey, can you give us the money out of the general fund? But the money that was given through the auditor's office came out of their state funds, some state tax money and came from Columbus. It wasn't general fund money. So what they're asking us to do is take money from. Our citizens, our residents' tax money and give it to Zeta. Um, which really isn't, we don't have a dog in this fight. This was something, the state money that passed through to the township. So to take it from county taxpayer money. Or rob it from another township to refund something here, which really isn't our, it's like paying a debt for somebody else that we don't know. And I feel for Zeta Township, if Zeta Township had needs where they got in a bind because this money being gone and they wanted to pay a loan from us. Or something like that, I think that's more appropriate, but to pay. Something that's a legal pending matter that the FBI is still investigating with. Uh, we, we just don't, I don't see anymore, we're legally, we legally can. Reach into our general fund and pay money out for something that had nothing to do with us. Without it being viewed as bum champion or howl or someone upset, like why are you taking our tax money? It wasn't us.
And, and I agree with you, but does Zeta know that, that, you know. We're not involved in that. I mean, they keep sending us correspondence, asking us. You know, for help and, and, and I, and I agree with you that if Zeta needs money, you know, maybe we loaned it to them or something. Someone even told me, and I don't know how true it is, that the auditor's office has a fund where she can pay the money out of that fund or legally she can pay the money out of that fund. So, so my question is, if, if they need money for their police and fire facility, it paid off, would she consider? Taking money out of that fund if it does in fact exist. Till we see what happens with the court case, cause it's probably, that's where it's gonna end up, but commissioners, we're, we're not a part of that, you know, but they keep. Sending us correspondence.
And, and that's where the prosecutor said, hey, if we wanna find out. If we. Could be drugging this fighter, if we should, we can obtain outside legal counsel, but I don't think we need to pay a bill for someone to say.
I don't, I don't wanna get drugged into it.
Yeah, so those two down the road are have the beef, you don't need to be involved.
Outside counsel for some, we're not involved.
And, and like you said, I, I. A crime happened, there are victims of the crime. Um, I hope it gets resolved. It would, it'd be nothing better than to catch. Where the money went to and get the money back from there. And if it doesn't, there are insurance companies on both sides. Um, and there are legal counsels on both sides, which I, I'm rooting for the best thing to happen as a commissioner, but I just don't see. Legally how we could even get involved. If we could, I would say, hey, let's, it's eighty grand, let's, you know, we got a million, let's, let's do something about it, but I don't see legally. How we can without opening ourselves up for. You know, we, we can't just. Give other people's money away unless there's. Just cause somehow, I, I would, I would think. And you can advise on that as prosecutors, we're not in this fight, right?
At this point, I don't see the commissioner, the commissioners haven't been involved at all and I, I don't see their involvement right now at least unless something else would come to light that would bring in. Uh, that, I guess what I would say, though, Bill Danzo, again, Prosecutor's Office, one more thing is. If you wanted to, there'd be nothing to prevent the board. If, if that's, you know, you've heard perhaps there's a fund. That could be used from the auditor's office. The board could reach out to the auditor and just ask that she talk to her counsel about that. I mean, you can't. I, I don't know that you could force her to do anything, obviously, as a separately elected official, but you could maybe put in the request that she speak with her legal counsel on that. To see if there are other, other options, but again, this matter being.
Find that out for us?
Being as, uh, I don't, again, I can't really be involved in it because.
You can't even ask if there's a fund for that?
Uh, if, 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 if we're doing something that could be perceived as working for or against either one of our clients, getting involved in this, we can't. Uh, but again, you know, I, because this is a contested matter at this point, I, I don't know. How much either party is gonna be willing to talk about potential options like that because they're, they're, you know. They're dealing with this now through their attorneys. I'm not sure.
That's a good job for the chairman, probably.
Excuse me?
That's a good job for the chairman, probably.
Are you. Liking me for that decision?
Uh, I, I honestly, I feel for, I know, which is never what happened. I, I feel, you know, I love Zeta Township, that's my, my money, you know, in a sense, um. Coming back from my township, but it's, I just don't see legally how we can do it.
Well, the problem is if, if they need the eighty thousand for police or fire, they want to see this get paid off, so what are our options for that?
And, and if that were the case, I'm sure there's, there would be a means where I would say, hey, we're not, we don't want a township. Because somehow we did, you know, by, I, I borrowed some money forward and stuff, not from us directly, but through the auditor, um. I don't.
Yeah, we just need to look at it. Yeah, so, so what do we do? Do we reach out to Zeta and tell them that?
I, I, I can already have through, through trusty Hobus, I've had conversations with them regarding this. I, we haven't officially. Done that, but I don't know if we officially, if they're officially waiting for a reply.
They seem to be, they keep sending us correspondence.
And, and I guess that's where. We need to decide that we need to have a, a hire our own attorney to do it, but once you attorney up again. Then it's like communication dies. I don't want to jeopardize a relationship.
Can you help us draft a letter to send them, telling them that?
The conflict.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure we can, um. I, I, let me, let me try to, let me consider that whether or not it would be possible for us to even help write a letter. Simply saying, you guys don't believe you're involved at this point, um. But again, I'm not sure that you really would, if that's the position of the board, I'm not really sure that you necessarily need legal counsel to do that for you either, so. Um, but I, I could, I could see if that's something, I'm just, I'm very hesitant because this is a, a direct conflict. You know, between two of our clients that I, I hesitate to be involved in at all.
Maybe we can.
We have a.
Maybe we can initiate. That's right, I mean, we have attorneys we've hired for other things, but this is. Something we'd have to pay. Do we want to pay on a general fund to hire an attorney to write a letter back to a township? I'm sure the township doesn't want to cost us any more taxpayer dollars than what we need to be if we don't need to be involved. You know, cause that's, that's hurting the whole county. Every penny we spend is taxpayer money.
The answer to that. Let you just let it.
Let's see what happens.
Yeah, let it.
Let it kind of flow and see where this goes and then. Make some decisions as to how to.
I mean, I guess we could send something, we're, we're in consensus here. That we don't have a dog in this fight and we wish them the support and if they have needs. Where they're detrimental, where they're gonna be in dire straits and on the verge of financial ruin over eighty grand. Then reach out to us at that time. And we got Lisa to write that letter and send it on behalf of the commissioners.
That was, would have been my suggestion.
You know, and, and all three of us could sign on that or the president of the board could sign it, you know.
They can't say we didn't respond.
Right, then we responded. With our thing and they, they gotta see that too. I mean, they, they could bring that through legal counsel. Legal counsel is gonna say. We, they're really, he knows the O R C, he knows what we can and can't do and. And I, I'm sure the legal counsel would say, yeah, they'd put them in jeopardy if they spent money that. Uh, came from other townships through. Sales tax or whatever it may be, you know, the, the, the money came from a specific place and was passed through the auditors to that, so. I think they're better off asking the state to reissue it again to them and let the state deal with it or. State order, but I mean, and now that it's legal, it's, it's not our fight. We're just on the sidelines. We're in the stands. Watching the teams play and, and it's unfortunate because we like both teams.
Hey, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine.
So, so we're in agreement. Do I have Lisa just write a letter up to respond? And, uh. Like you said, if they have a direct need, absolutely with something, uh. Uh. We can address at that point, see what legal means we have and if we need to hire an attorney at that time. I think that's probably the best route.
Okay. Any motion to adjourn the meeting?
Um, did we want to talk about budget stuff at all? Or we're just gonna wait till tomorrow?
Or, or did we get?
This is. The one that, uh, Sheriff Bearforce, it's just a little easier. She emailed it over and she made a copy here. Um, she's got a copy for each of us and basically she just broke down the whole big budget by department and every single thing. There's a lot of things on here that still aren't on. I guess the bottom line is we know from what we've read already. We've got fourteen million dollars, fourteen nine hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars more asks. Than what we have speculated we're gonna bring in. So us three as commissioners need to go down there and. Pull out the pencil or the scalpel and trim that, we gotta trim fourteen million dollars off these asks somewhere.
So we noticed the six million right off the bat in the commissioners, building inspections and maintenance. Um. I don't know.
Yeah, what, why is that system?
Yeah, Alex did some research on that. Alex, you clue them in on what we found out yesterday?
Um, Commissioners, I just simply just, I, I need to see that. I, I don't know. Um. So I can tell you that from an employee's standpoint. Um, so I can tell you that from an employee's standpoint, when I just redid the Board of Commissioners, so like the, the Commissioners. My Excel, when anybody who reports directly to the Commissioners, I come up with one point four. And employee expenses, that includes healthcare, PERS, worker's comp, all the fringe benefits. Again, one point four is a far cry away from fifteen million. So that is all I can attest to, and I do know that one point four million dollars is down from a one point six before, so yes, there was a cost savings there. But I have no clue, uh, what to say about the rest, I would have to look at it.
Well, who put that figure there?
Um, your budget person within your staff, which would have been Sheriff Taylor.
Chrissy put it together, Martha, I mean, the auditor, right?
There was one big thing yesterday that we, what was the big thing that Alex, we discovered? That was like six million or, or four, four million that we.
Well, building maintenance is definitely six million.
Right, but that was. In past budgets, but it just wasn't listed the same way. So it wasn't like our budget's up that much more, it was just in a different classification, or it was.
In the line item, different area?
I'm not sure what, I, I'm sorry, I'm not.
That's what it looked like yesterday, was that, that came from.
Well, that's maybe why we should talk about the budget tomorrow.
I mean, we talked to you, is the, is the two million for the corner there, is the, is the? Nine one one center in there, cause we talked two million, two million, two million, and that was the question we had, and Bill's not here today to. Ask him about it either.
That's a start.
Do we bring the office holders and department heads back in when we, when we start?
This is, what we do is, uh. We, we go over the budget, we cut the areas percentage wise where we think what percentage we need, and then. The auditor had asked that we kick it back to the department heads, and if we say. Your budget's being cut by X number of dollars. Then they will say, okay, we'll cut this, 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 and this, and then they'll resubmit it to us. And they'll let them make the cuts internally, we just tell them what their bottom line is, here's how much you're getting. And then we'll let them figure out where to make the cut, and then come back to us, we're not gonna come in and say. You can't buy this stapler and you can't give this person a raise, or whatever, we just say. Percentage wise, you get fifteen point two percent of the budget, which equals this amount, you ask for this amount. Take your eraser and pencil out and then resubmit it afterward, and then we'll, then we'll fine tune and approve it, is, was, what was the. Generally recommended way to do it. And there are some things where, you know, we will say, no, we're not gonna do this, and we can, we can offer our advice on that, but. Um, we don't need to micromanage each individual other elected office.
Sure, we're asking to cut fourteen million, how, how much, what was the, um. What was the, um?
Seventy-one million, I think, is what we.
What was a good question there, though? Me, this seems like an awful lot of money.
No, it, it was about, it's, it's, it was about that last year too. Yeah, right off the sheriff's department, I think we got four million last year, from what he requested.
Sure, maybe about seventeen, eighteen?
Uh, it's, it's a total. He spent, or, or initially, they, I think Sheriff won twenty-four million last year, right off the, right off the gate, we cut. A couple million off that.
They wanted nineteen, you, like, the Board of Commissioners, Alex Stephen Juncy-Bush, um, their name's, I have human resources department. They wanted nineteen million last year, the Board of Commissioners.
That's right, they won, but initially, when he came in the fir-, at first, it was twenty-three and something, almost twenty-four.
Um, I have, uh, did run that number. With the additional two million, so the Board of Commissioners had to subsidize at the end of the year. Uh, so it was roughly twenty point eight.
They gave him how much, seventeen?
Seventeen, yeah. Well, seventeen, you know. Right, which is, which they told you, which, they, I, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna call a spade a spade, they said that that was going to happen. At the, the very beginning, they said, we asked for nineteen million, again, an ask is an ask, the B O C decided to, you know, pare that back down. With, you know, the auditor's department, and they worked through that, and they cut it down to seventeen. So we fully anticipated that they were going to, I mean, I could have told, yeah, right, and they roughly go over. To your point, two to three million every year, I mean, I can look back and show, you can see that, um, so. It, it then gets into a conversation of commissioners. You can give people percentages all day long, okay? But then how are they operating, right? That's your call, um, when, when, when a percentage shows that you need a certain percentage shop or your business, and we, we don't have that percentage. It's gonna be a tough task.
And there were, I mean. A lot of asks that they knew were gonna get cut, you know, they asked for the moon when they come in here of. Everything they could possibly need now, and it's gonna get cut, so there is some fat built into it, I believe, in all these requests.
Yeah.
And it's our job to kinda. Just divvy out, there's only so many pieces of the puzzle, some don't fit, the ones that don't fit, we gotta get rid of and make the, make the puzzle. Which isn't an easy task, but every county does it. Eighty-eight counties do the same thing we're doing, and. I'm sure there's no county out there that has says, hey, you guys didn't recommend enough, yeah, ask us for some more stuff, cause we got a bunch of money. Still sitting there, um, I doubt that that happens.
I agree, Bill Danson County Prosecutor's Office too, I don't know, I haven't looked at it for a long time, but the. The C C A O handbook may have a section two about budgeting and county financing, and I. I know you guys all have government experience, so it's, I'm not probably saying anything you don't know, but. Uh, there may be a guide in there too, as turn, in terms of. You know, there's, there's county mandated services, and there's county discretionary services, so when you get into that, that kind of makes a difference in the whole. Consideration process sometimes too, so just something to keep an eye on.
That is big thing here, Bill.
Is it, okay, yeah.
So we have it broken down by, that is one of the things that I was majorly concerned about, from a human resources standpoint, for our forces and just in general. There are certain things that are mandated that you can't touch per Ohio advice code, so that is broken down by category for them, the auditor's job. The auditors did a wonderful job, uh, this is definitely a different approach than what we've taken in the past, and I think that we're getting all better collectively together. But yes, Bill, to your point, there's mandated amounts that we know that they can't touch, and that was broken down to request department entities. Then it was broken down to department appropriations.
Sure.
Uh, and then from there, that was my plea to the board, please don't just take your pen and start cutting from people. Cause you don't necessarily know what line you're cutting from, and if you're cutting from something that's a safety services, and there's. Mandates that you have so many C O's in the jail per shift, there's mandates that you have, you know, jail services with medical contracts, there's so many different mandates. When you get into the safety services forces, that you can start cutting things, and you're not necessarily sure what you're cutting, we, we could, um. It could be detrimental to our safety services, um.
Same thing like veterans, it says they get so much of inside village. That's what they're getting in courts, when they ask for it, we give it to them, or else they can do a court order, we gotta give it to them.
Who put the budget together for the Sheriff's Department this year? Was it, and it just? Uh, some numbers or?
Alex Stephen Juncy-Bush, every single time I talk, just out of curiosity.
Yeah, just.
Alex Stephen Juncy-Bush, Human Resources Department Commissioner, that's a very good question. So in the past, the chief, uh, usually, so Chief Palmer, would have been the person in the past. Was, uh, the delegated person or the sheriff, uh, to deal with budget matters, so he would put in, you know, his budget, they would present it. Um, this past year, the one where you guys just sat back with us in November, um, they put in some numbers, there is a little bit of misconstrued. Knowledge out there, and I'm gonna here to give you the facts, they did put numbers in there. That's what you're seeing here, twenty point eight five million, um, but again, they just put numbers in there, so. What we, yeah. We.
Alright, so my other question is, and I know you work closely with this, have you, have you sat down with the new sheriff? And his finance people have gone over the budget, so what his budget question would really be?
I have not yet, because I know that Christie's sister Eric was doing that from an auditor's perspective first, to try to help them pare it down. And help them get to know what the funds were, each, you know what I mean, I can only, you know, I can do so much, but when it gets down to each fund line. Christie really needed to sit down with them and educate them as far as this is what this line is, this is what that line is. So hopefully that part is all done now, and we can actually, absolutely have conversations about how to pare down that twenty point five.
Yeah, so. It's probably gonna be a revised budget from them. That we need to look at before we start the Sheriff's Department.
Right, that's, that's one.
And you consider that, yeah.
Bottom line is too, Tony, our commissioner, I'm sorry, um. Bottom line is, the commissioners set the budget of the county. And if we tell a sheriff, you got fifteen million to deal with, deal with it, you're mandated to do so much stuff, the other stuff. Figure out what you gotta do, then that's what's gonna happen, I don't wanna do that, we wanna work with them, so it works with everybody, but. We set the budget here as commissioners for the county, we're responsible at the end, if the county goes broke, it's on us. And if we allow, you know, if it's another elected official that goes overboard, and we keep allowing them money, we keep pulling money and giving it to them. You know, then, that's on us also, you know, then, so we have to mandate this stuff, and. Ultimately, we're gonna be judged ourselves with this kind of, whether someone gets laid off, or, or we're in a red at the end of the year borrowing money. You know, we can't say, well. The sheriff told us he needed this much, so we gave it to him, it's ultimately. Our decision on how much we actually do, but we do need to communicate with each person, make sure it fits, you know, and. You know, we can't just give them unlimited trips to the buffet, you know, they all get through with one size plate and not two plates and. You know.
They're used to coming back and always getting more, you know.
They, but, and then that's happened here in the past with this county, and that's the thing we need to avoid, and that's why I think with the three of us. I think we could do a pretty good job of, of not having that happen, there's nothing worse than the end of the year, the department head comes and says, hey, um. I need two million dollars to pay salaries, to make it to the end of the year, I gotta lay off a bunch of deputies, we don't want that, you know, but that's happened.
Well, Commissioners Alex Stephen Juncy-Bush, again, we have been trying to. Really be more vocal about how to budget accordingly, make sure, if you, I've been reminding everybody, you know, throughout the past year and a half. You have contracts coming up, you need to account for that, you cannot just throw out a number there. And know that you're going into contract negotiations, and you know there's gonna be some sort of potential increase, right, we know that. Uh, we know the health insurance is on that, we have baked all of that in, that's why you're seeing. Probably a little bit more of an inflated budget, because this is the department head's kind of first shot and elected officials of. Trying to give you more of a realistic budget, so that way they don't need money at the end of the year, so. In a way, this is a little bit more forward thinking, that what we've been what we have been in the past, but now we just really need to dig in. Um, and it's not enough just to say fifteen million for commissioners, we need to see, you need to see, we need to see that. Because again, that includes multiple general fund departments within that, so it's not as easy as just saying it's all commissioners. That goes into your point, building maintenance, vehicle maintenance, building inspection, I mean, I know because I have all those in contracts, so. We gotta get down to a line level and understand who's really requesting what, and, and where do you wanna cut? Cause at the end of the day. Your highest ticket dollar amount is always going to be in one place, and I can guarantee you this, ninety-nine, ninety percent, I, I bet on it. It's your employees, your employees are your number one cost, always voting. But if you don't have employees, you don't have services, you don't have town that, so there's other places we need to cut, right? Operational expenses.
Julie Green, sounds like a good spot to bring out the early retirement, so.
Okay, let me get that, but Commissioners, you really need to look at. Line levels, being operational utilities, leveraging contract costs, I mean, are we recouping all the costs for all these contracts? I'm not sure, there's other ways we need to really kind of start looking at this on a deeper.
Alex, the contract that was just approved yesterday, is that gonna come out of this year's budget or?
Hasn't been voted on by the B O C yet, it is still confidential, sorry.
When that is done, will that be this year's budget, or that be a whole budget?
It will be some, I can't go into details, I'm sorry, we'll talk in executive session if you wish.
Okay, what about the, the stuff like from the contracts that are, every, every other contract up until this is already a paid for?
No, yes and no, all of them, yes, with the exception of unit five, which is the sheriff O P V A.
Right.
Um, I quickly rallied the troops, once I got the new sheriff in, we met, uh, last week multiple times, we are actually going back into mediation on Friday. That's like this Friday, so we're hoping to get that wrapped up, um, A S A P, because it needs to be wrapped up, so.
Okay.
Alright, um, we will be talking about twenty-four ninety-three, obviously, the, the union did vote on it yesterday, I'm not gonna go into details. Um, it was a positive thing, but I need to bring that to you guys next to the B O C, so we can discuss how you would like to pursue. Facilitating all this, because it is the bulk. And that is what I'm gonna tell you, that's what you see these people forecasting for, because they knew this was coming.
Okay, so do you think this is already baked into these budgets?
Oh, I, at least if anybody took my advice, and from sitting in with the, but, uh, I know the prosecutor's office came to me and said how could we properly forecast. I worked hand in hand with multiple departments to make sure that they were properly forecasting for those things, including but not limited to, again, health insurance increases. Uh, PERS, which is, that's still fourteen percent, but when your salary goes up, your PERS goes up. Everything goes up, so all of that was baked in, at least with any department who worked with me or took my advice when I put out what to put into your budget.
And that's gonna be a difficult part, Commissioners, tomorrow, when we're done with the regular meeting, we're gonna keep the meeting going, as we agreed last week. And then come to this table, and we're gonna have to sit here basically, go line by line with the auditor, on how she came to this figure, or how it was done, we may have to be. Taking notes to request from people, where did you get this number from, there's gonna be a lot of questions we're gonna have, so this isn't gonna be a. Fifteen minutes at the end of the meeting, we're gonna review this thing, this is gonna have to be something where we are.
You ordered the pizza, I'll buy it, it sounds like enough pizza. I have another question, it's not on the budget, but, um, vehicle maintenance, that's a better answer.
Yes.
I have a question, Michael Biden, every day, and they see all these vehicles that. And I'm sure they're not using, why are they just sitting there, totally just rid of them?
Um, Alex Stephen Juncy-Bush, Human Resources Department, yeah, so those are all the things that we need to really, really, really sink our teeth into. Um, a lot of that, they're just keeping them for scrap parts, from what I, what I can understand, but again, as we get new sheriff vehicles, right? A lot of those cars that you see there, they used to keep for kind of like the Ford Torres's and the Crown Victoria's, we don't have those. Right, so if we don't have those, we really need to get, uh, stuff liquidated, uh, gov deals, I mean, we have processes for all this, we just need. To get it moving, um, so, and those are all things that we're gonna be able to see. I know, yeah, I know.
We, we haven't had an auction in a couple of years, so we, we should, something we should be doing.
Call a junkyard.
Well, what we can do is, you know, we do have to follow because it is an asset of the county, what, what we would do is, obviously, we would say, did I say Alex Stephen Juncy-Bush, I'm sorry. Human Resources Department, we would have to just make sure that we offer it, then if it doesn't, you know, go through the process, we can jump.
And we need a motion to, uh, start that process.
We need to figure out gov deals in general, uh, so, because we've been utilizing.
I mean, some of those vehicles.
Gary Newbrass, enter in your bomber, I don't know, I can give you some assistance with that.
Well, I'm not gonna be doing that, that's gonna be, um, that's, we have a vehicle department head, it'll be, we need to get them. And if not, I.
Well, when it comes to gov, yeah, there's, there's. There's vehicles we haven't used in, I, I'd venture say a dozen years or more. That, that are just sitting there, that are, it's basically a vehicle graveyard.
It, it just needs cleaned up, yeah, it's just.
We have work to do, so, and those are gonna be things that we need to.
But there are, like, as she said, we can't just say junkyard, come get it, give us four hundred bucks and crush it. Yeah, we have to go through the proper procedure of, we can't, even deaths and furniture, we can't just throw them away.
Yeah, you gotta deem them surplus. First, you gotta vote on them for surplus, but you gotta, I think, if we should, well, you might have to get certain VIN numbers.
Yes, thank you, I wanted Commissioners Alex Stephen Juncy-Bush, there should be, I hope, we're gonna have to inquire. There should be an inventory list, even believe it or not, every one of those junky cars sitting out there, you're completely correct, they are pieces of you know what. But they were still at one time a county asset with a VIN number, with a title, with everything associated, we have to dispose of those proper. Um, so yes, I believe what we need to do is tell Bill Hart, let's prioritize it, if that's what you want his last couple weeks to be, let's get it moving.
When I end that, Tony, you want me with, with Bill Hart and? Take that project on?
And just so you know, Commissioners. Ooh, yeah, it's that simple, yeah.
He's leaving within a month, so Lisa, meet, meet with him instead.
Go next Tuesday, so.
Okie doke, and, um, Commissioners, we'll be talking about coming to a theater near you, uh, we do have some sort of, uh, plan in place, I have gotten through interviews. Might as well just tell you right now, I've gotten through interviews for both his position and an assistant position that we had created before. He, he told us he's retiring, um, so, um, I am ready to run whatever the board would like to do, if you would like to interview these two candidates, that is your choice. Uh, but I have picked two extremely, uh, as long as they will take our offers. Um, I actually did some background checks on them yesterday, some reference checks, uh, one is a, a very strong internal candidate, not within. Our department, but coming from another entity, um, and I talked to his superintendent yesterday, uh, county, another county public official. Uh, and then the other gentleman is a, a very, very, very qualified, uh, runs the V A hospitals for Cleveland Clinic, three of them. Uh, sixty bed facilities, helped build them from the ground up, I mean, we've got some good candidates, and I would like to move before we lose those good candidates, however. This is gonna be dependent on our budget, we also need to know that, it makes it hard for me to do. This is gonna be dependent on our budget, we also need to know that, it makes it hard for me to do my job. And really tell you how much I can hire people in at if I don't know what our budget's gonna be. So keep that in mind.
What I'd like to do is like, with the way we hired you, if there's a way, I'd like to interview the people, and what we did when we we hired Alexander, when we hired Tacy. Is they set up interviews with the three commissioners concurrently, boom, 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 then we met. Um, at our next workshop, we discussed the candidates and then we hired them the. The next day.
We're not meeting with them together?
Commissioners, you can meet with them to, first of all, as long as you're not making a decision, you absolutely can interview them together, that is what I would suggest.
So we all.
I have no problem with that then.
As long as you don't, as long as it's a straight interview and then you go out, make your own collective decisions and and then do that in a public.
I don't see Bill shaking his head either way or anything, so.
Yeah, I I, Bill Danso Prosecutor's Office, I, it's not a question that's ever come up, to be honest, before that way, um, you know. Whether it could be considered informational, where you guys are not discussing amongst each other, um, I I I I'm assuming that it's something that HR has kinda dealt with before, so. Uh, but if it's something you would like us to work together, look into legally, I'd be happy to do.
Or they can go into executive session, I have looked at this into this before.
I figured as much.
And I think you have an option, you can.
Attorney Danzo, he can be there, and if we say something that's not information, he can say, no. I mean, really.
I mean, truthfully, you're not making a decision, that's the bottom line, that would be essentially a violation. But you also could also have your HR director ask the questions and you guys are just there sitting, we could, you know, take notes and giving me your ideas or thoughts or feedback, that way you're not saying a word.
I like that idea, I'll run by, we do have legal counsel, we hired on the side, they deal with. Sunshine Lab stuff that we already have on retainer right now is working with us, I can ask that question today to make sure, but I'm sure. And a lot of CCAO also, I'm sure other counties do it that way, I know, I know I've seen it that way.
You also, again, I can already tell you, I've gotten an opinion on this, you can go into executive session and interview at the same time. Just so you know, that's to discuss the employment, hiring, right, G one, so.
With uh, individual?
Absolutely, absolutely. It will be one hell of a long executive session, but hey, that's what I'm here for. Let's do it.
If we can do an executive session on on.
Yeah.
Thursday.
You could do an executive session on a Tuesday at a workshop, executive session at a public meeting, as long as it's a public meeting.
If you do it on a off day, you just have to call a special.
Meeting, yeah, that's all. We got your back, we would not do anything that would, you know, push you in.
But I do think we need to interview them too, this is something we need to get a feel and we know.
Together, that way, you you may ask a question and that makes sport question that I have, I might have wanted.
Delay the process slightly, but I think it's worth the due diligence.
He's set forth position.
Very much so.
We gotta get moving on it.
Well, then I'm gonna get those set up. So. Okay, so again, Commissioners Alex Dean Jenzy Bush, going back to, but all of that, just so you know, plays very much heavily into how HR operates in the future. Because, you know, obviously, we're looking to employ people, every time you employ somebody, you're factoring a fifty thousand dollar benefit packet, that's realistically where we're at right now countywide, for every full time employee you bring on. You need to equillate that, to correlate that to fifty thousand dollars in insurance first, workers comp, uh. Uh. All of the benefits, all of the fringe benefits, so. All of that matters, right? We really need to figure out what you want budget wise, um, because I can't make people valid offers, you know. Until we're sure that we have the money to support that. Or wherever else we need to cut to be able to support that.
Agreed.
I just wanna make sure I make the most educated decisions. For on behalf of the board.
Well, which which position? You wanna go with the assistant first?
The assistant was posted first, yes.
So so we can move on that one?
Yeah.
Right now?
Both I have interviewed though and and ready to roll, I I knew I had to go quickly because of, you know, the retirement. Um, they were posted roughly within a week of each other, um, and as soon as the candidates came in, I was interviewing. So I've done quite a few interviews and ready.
So can you submit us their names?
Absolutely.
Along with um, amount that you're requesting?
Yes.
That's not a real vehicle, right? Right?
Great, I've looked at the resumes, I went in, met with her, looked them over, but. I think we also look at that, look at the background, and, you know, the next step we really have with both the individuals is background checking.
Well. Bill Hart, we're gonna be coup this money, cause he's gonna retire.
Correct. However, there is a however, his payout for twenty twenty five will be ninety thousand dollars, so there is a huge however there, I'm sorry. I'm gonna be honest with you, Commissioner. I've looked at all that, yeah. Yeah, that's just indication, so, yeah, you know. So we'll get there, it'll take us, yeah. I think we gotta make some cuts elsewhere that within that department to kind of free up some of that.
You go get that, good. Sure.
Yeah.
If we need money, we can borrow from county engineering, you got a lot of money.
Yeah, Gary's.
Gary gets to eliminate your.
As Commissioner. We all got this bag issue, so.
They don't care.
This budget or this uh, budget. Printed. We only got, I I looked at it on my phone, so now I'm gonna have an opportunity, we'll have an opportunity, and then we'll have to.
We gotta discuss that tomorrow.
Tomorrow, that's what we planned.
Executive?
Yep. Kids, maybe we talked about whether to do a special meeting for it or regular, and you guys said, let's just continue on with it, so.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Grigiano had something he need to talk to Commissioners about. And Sir Christopher Faro has been with me, Nick Coggins and the prosecutor.
And Gary.
And Gary Schaefer, so, uh, John, did you want, are you meeting, did you want, did you need all three of us?
I guess. Explanation of the review, well, you're somewhat familiar with this. To bring the other two commissioners.
So are you asking them for anything, or you just, you just explain to them the structure?
Structure, like explaining where we're going.
So do you, do we need, do we need to be in public session for it or not, I guess, is that what you're saying? If there's anything they're gonna vote on or make a decision on, then they should, okay, then we can end the meeting, you can meet with those two. That way, I'll meet with Chris Faro and be good to go.
Yeah, definitely.
I will see a huge. What?
And you need to. Gary?
Okay, I'm not sure where.
My percentage.
Okay.
Oh, Gary. You gotta go back to nineteen six.
I need to, any answers to any questions? From the city of Warren.
Been.
Okay, these weeks go by like lightning.
Yes, I know.
So that's.
They're.
So.
Yes.
Well.
John, I still need to be on. Take this one, put that on, you know, but I'm just dealing with your. Oh, so. I'm just gonna have to wait and see how it looks.
Contact that you want, whether it's the rest of the, you know, whoever, it doesn't matter.
It depends on how how we.
Before we adjourn, uh, Mr. Chairman, the CCAO is coming up here on the twenty eighth, so, yep, not next week, but the weekend after. But they're coming up to meet with us, and uh, in a workshop and go over what some other counties do, offer some advice, some recommendation of CCAO. And then after we adjourn the meeting, they're, they like to take us to lunch and just continue, and stuff. But that'll be not next Tuesday, but the Tuesday after, so if we get anyone that wants to schedule for that meeting, we're just know that we have. See, the two representative CCAO will be in town.
Yes. That's. So not next week, it's the following. Okay.
Does Chairman make a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Yeah, super hard.
Yes.
Yes.